Monica, I'm just glancing. We have everybody here, correct?
We have our council members, yes. Jeff Peters is supposed to be on to verify. And I do not see him as it is only 2:58. Let me give him a holler and tell him to get online.
Okay, thanks. Are you talking to me, Russ?
Yeah, I think we heard something through your microphone.
Well, unless it is that guy sitting in the corner over there, you didn't hear anything. So I didn't hear it unless he can talk and not from here. I know I'm guilty of it normally. I'm not.
Sherry, tilt your camera.
As usual, it's Russ's fault.
To be expected, right?
Sherry, if I could recommend, we can get this started and when Jeff is ready to go, he can give us a quick read back after Mr. Costello is done. It's really not that big of an issue.
Okay. Um, you know what? We need to hold off just one second, okay?
No, Don, normally I have the list of questions from Andrew. I don't have those. Do we? You're muted.
Hey, Madam Mayor? Oh, hang on just a minute. He's calling me back.
Your first and only question, because it was a multi-part question, was it was what are the top three important things?
Right, I have that one.
The council. And that was because it's a multi-part question. I believe that was to give them an opportunity to expand.
Okay, okay. For some reason, I thought we had more last time.
We did, but we went with a more expansive question this time. As I said, Sherry, if you wanted to get started, I don't think it's an issue.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Peters apologizes. He had to leave the office. I just gave him the number to call in and the webinar ID. So it should only be a moment. Legally, we are required before interviews start to verify that all interview candidates are legal residents.
Okay.
Um, Don?
Yes?
Do you know if Jeff is, Jeff Peters is chiming in here to let us know that he's verified all residencies for the candidate?
No.
Okay.
Sherry, if I could suggest, I have already verified the addresses of every applicant. I can attest to that, if that's all it takes, Monica.
Rob?
Yes? You're muted again.
Right. Does it, does it need to be the city planner who verifies their residency?
I'm not sure if it needs to be, but I'd like to follow the same process.
Okay, sure.
Monica, can we call him?
He is, he's, she called him. He's going, he's calling in.
I understand that, but can we just call him and have Monica hold the phone up to a microphone?
Oh.
I mean, when is he going to be calling in?
Well, apparently, he was doing it as just a couple of minutes ago. Monica, are you on there? Mr. Costello. Welcome to Modern Technology.
Good afternoon.
We're just waiting for Mr. Peters.
Okay.
Okay, be just a minute.
Thank you.
Roger, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have Jeff on speaker, so give me just a second. And I'm gonna put the microphone by the speaker on my phone, and I will let him verify.
Okay.
All right, Jeff, go ahead.
Hi, Madam Mayor, it's a member of the council. This is Jeff Peters. I'm the city planner for the city of Seela. I have reviewed all addresses for potential council members and found that all applications that were submitted fall within the boundaries of the city of Seela.
All right, thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, mister, okay, we are going to start our study session. Our first applicant for council member is Mr. Costello. Welcome, Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Please take approximately up to five minutes to introduce yourself to the council.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for accepting my application and giving me this opportunity. My name is Mike Costello, or Michael. I go by Mike. And to tell you to begin with, I'm from a humble upbringing, so it's going to be a little difficult to talk about myself. But I know that I only have 20 minutes to do so and convince you that I am the best applicant for the position here for the opening on the city council. Again, my name is Mike Costello, originally from the small town of Mapton, down in the lower Yakima Valley, where I grew up and attended school K through 12. My father was the police chief down there all the entire time I was growing up. And so I knew at an early age that that's what I wanted to do and follow as a career path. I remember specifically in third grade where my father came to our classroom in uniform and read to us, and how excited all the kids were. And that I was pretty proud that that was my dad in uniform standing in front of us. So I knew that that's what I wanted to do. So fast forward, I graduated from Mapton High School, still with the same intentions of following the career path of my dad. I attended YVC and Central Washington University. And while attending school, I turned 21, which is the minimum age for required to be a law enforcement officer in the state of Washington. So I tested for a position at the Yakima Police Department, and I was hired at the age of 21. I spent 32 years there, working in all different divisions. The Uniform Patrol Division, the Investigative Division, and also the Administrative Division. And I was a supervisor there for retiring as a detective sergeant. When I got promoted in 1996. I did a lot of different things while within the police department. Mainly supervision of personnel. I worked with budgets. Worked with planning. Particularly in the last part of my career. And when I left, I knew that the specific date when I was going to retire, because both my parents passed away at an early age. So I knew that I wanted to be able to go out and do things and do whatever I wanted to do. And not not having to work full-time so that I was able to accomplish other things in my life. So that, I retired two years ago. And since then, I've been living a quiet life here in the city of Seela. I moved here originally in 1994. And my kids went to school here, K through 12, graduated from Seela High School. And that kind of brings me to now where I'm after two years of retirement or over two years. I'm ready for some new challenges. And I thought I would come and and put my application in for this position and see if I could help.
All right, thank you. What do you believe are council members' primary responsibilities? And how do you think a council member should interact with city staff?
Council members are in charge of making ordinances, resolutions. And they they should be good stewards of the city's tax money. Everybody expects that, and they expect sound decisions from council members. So I know that those expectations of the council are very high by the community members. And so I know that that was something that I would actually, I would be able to handle. Becoming a city council member to be, to be involved with that. As far as the other city staff, I get along with people great, always have. And I know that I won't have any problems with making new friends. I don't know many people that are in, that work in City Hall. I do know many of the city employees of different divisions that I have as friends. And so I don't think there's going to be any issue with making new friends while I'm here.
Okay. On your applications, you talked about some things on priorities. Pick one of your priorities that you would like to implement and tell us how you would do that.
When I listed them, I didn't list them in any necessary order. However, I'll pick the Downtown Association. I have not worked with them. I've always seen them working throughout the city on beautification efforts, on some of the decisions that have been released to the media, on some of the things, were things that they're doing. And so I've always respected that. I know that they do a lot of work. And I would like to be a part of that as far as being able to help out in the community and also to, to help them if I can, in whatever respect as far as the work that they do throughout the downtown and for the city of Seela.
What is your philosophy regarding the fiscal management as far as a city council member is concerned?
I would definitely consider myself a conservative. Not only in my personal life, but also politically, which I'm not politically active. Never run for a position before. Never put my name in for a position other than things at the police department. My assignments at the police department required me to be conservative with the management of money. The position that I last held at Yakima Police Department required me to be the only person that was directly in charge of a large budget. And so I know what the issues that can arise if you're not spending wisely. So definitely conservative on, on the personal side also. Because if I wasn't, then I wouldn't have been able to retire at the age of 53.
Okay. Okay, council members, let's go around and, and ask Mr. Costello a question. Mr. Workenhagen.
Mike, what would you consider the Seela's biggest challenges in the next five years?
Biggest challenges, promoting our city. We hear of a lot of events that go on throughout the city, and the bigger ones get, get promoted that from outside or to the outside of our city as far as citizens. So we need to promote more things that go on in our city and promote not only the businesses, but also the events that do take place. Also, holding more events to draw more people to see what is available and what is, is here in Seela. And realize that it's a great place to live.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
This might be similar to one of the questions that you already answered, but slightly different perspective. How would you describe the role of the city council in the overall operation and governance of the city? And what, more specifically, what do you see your role being as a member of that council?
Well, I'm used to being a police officer for 32 years. I'm used to policies, procedures, how you handle yourself, how you deal with your fear, the public. Also, how you handle yourself outside of work, because it's under a microscope all the time. So as a council member, I see myself as doing the exact same thing. I, following policies and procedures and guidelines. I know and realize that the council members have limited authority. So they just have to understand where or what decisions can be made with that authority. And the rest of the time be responsible for the decisions that you make.
All right, thank you. Ms. Mappson?
Thank you. Hi, Mike. Thanks for coming in today.
Thank you.
Kevin already asked the question I was gonna ask you about the biggest challenge that you see facing the city. But can you describe how you would bring about a solution to that challenge, promoting our city?
Well, working with the media is a challenge in itself. However, it can be done. Working in the positions that I have with the, the police department. As a supervisor, I was in charge of press releases, working directly with the media. I worked three years in public relations, so that's what I did. And with the school district. So as long as people realize that they, and understand that the media, the folks, they also have a job to do. And give them the opportunity to give, to do their jobs. They will help you in, in the what it is that you're trying to, to do. So in that, using the media to promote the city, I think that would be a big step. I know that the media doesn't, isn't always nice to public officials. And, but realizing that they also have a job to do. And this, the city of Yakima, where most of the media is based, is just a stepping stone for a lot of the, the media members. So they need to do something to get their, their job further. So working with them, I think, is going to be a big an asset and to promoting the city. And also letting them know what's available out here, business-wise and, as I said, event-wise.
Thank you.
Ms. Vargas?
Hi, thanks for being here, Mike. Yeah, I was reading through your application and speaking from your background of a police officer as well as an instructor for the ethics and diversity. How do you think the city could move forward to begin to reduce the divide between our police and our protesters in our city?
Very tough question. The protests that I see, as long as they're doing, the protesting is within the laws. I don't see an issue with it. I don't have any, I guess, I don't lean one way or the other. Mine is more of listening to other people and knowing or, and being able to come up with a, and my own educated ideas based off of the facts that are in front of me. So with the police department, I know that it's critical for them to have the community work hand-in-hand with them. Without that, you can't solve crimes. People won't be witnesses. There's going to be hesitation when they call the police. And so that, that's not something that anybody would want. For the police to be effective, they need to have the citizens of the city that they're supporting and protecting work hand-in-hand with them and, and help them whenever they can. So that, that, that's a real touchy situation, I know. It's touchy all throughout the United States. And I think as much as possible, having police be out in the community, not only in their patrol cars and being visible in uniform, but also being available when they see somebody just walking down the street and talking to them. Or stepping into businesses and more proactive type, public relations type activity.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Yes, and thank you, Mike, for applying.
Thanks.
You've already addressed about the Seela Downtown Association and your desire to work with them. Can you give us an example, though, of what you think we might be able to do as a city to attract new business?
Well, I think, first off, have the citizens on board with a mission. So the city elected officials have a mission and have the citizens understand what that mission is and what our goals are. So having more people involved in attaining that mission and those goals will help in bringing, whether it be word of mouth or friend of a friend, whatever avenue that, that allows it. But to bringing in more people here and more businesses. I know that the lower Yakima and the lower Yakima Valley, they get a lot of traffic, a lot of people that come over from the west side. Well, Seela is on the way to that, those destinations. So we need to have something here or can continue to grow with the businesses or, again, events or whatever to draw people so that people understand that this can also be a destination location. Whether that be wineries, I, I know that that's an easy one because of all the wineries up and down the valley. But we have several businesses around town that people come from outside of town to come and, to visit. So I think having more, more businesses just like that and then promoting, again, whether it be through the media, however it is of promoting those businesses and getting more people out here, that more people out here will see exactly what Seela has to offer.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlson?
Hey, Mike, thanks for joining us. One, one of the priorities you put on there was to work with city employees so they know how important they are. How do you see that, that happening? How do you see the, showing that appreciation to the city employees? For one, and then how do you see the city working with the employees? And then also, as a council member, how do you see that? So there are three different parameters.
Okay, so how would I, okay, so the being a former city employee myself, I know it was simple things that the city council members would do. Not all of them would do that, do things, but there were a few, and those were the ones that I really respected. Something as simple as coming out and riding on a shift. Or coming out and asking, hey, what it is that you do? And give me a tour of your, whether it be public works, fire department, police department. Any of those things, just showing interest will let people know that, or let employees know that you do care. So I would be definitely available for that. So again, being a former city employee myself, I know exactly what what, what made me happy that, when I saw them do it. My next-door neighbor, before he passed away, was Alan Schmidt. And I saw him doing things like that. And when he was on the city council. And so a lot of those things I, I respected him for because he was out there working on things from, because I was with him many times or discussing things with him because he was trying to get my ideas. Anything from the skate park when it was being first thought of to lighting around the tennis courts, things like that. And so I think being involved will definitely be a help and show the other city employees that you care. Again, going out and touring their facilities, asking them questions and, or just greeting him, greeting them on a day-to-day basis when you come in contact with them. I do that now when I do see them come up my street, where they'll stop and talk to me or at least wave and say hi. But I do that with pretty much everybody, so it doesn't just have to be city employees. And the last part, I'm sorry, Mr. Carlson?
No problem. And from a, from a city perspective, the city-to-staff relationship.
Oh, city-to-staff, I think the city, of course, would not run if it wasn't for the city staff. I mean, we see everybody from the, of course, city administrator and then Mr. Case, city attorney. The council isn't able to do that alone and do all the work that is necessary. I saw, I just met Monica, and I saw her running back and forth through the hallway here as there was the little technical glitch there from the beginning. So I understand that everybody's got a job to do, and so people need to realize how important they are. And each and every person, from the person that reads meters to the person that runs the finances, everybody's important and an important cog in the whole Sela city system.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cattell, thank you. We are out of time. We will, we're going to meet our next applicant, and we will be seeing you after a while.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Overby.
Good evening.
How are you this evening?
I'm pretty good.
All right, well, we're going to start with the questions. Ellen, please take up to five minutes to introduce yourself. We have some new council members since you were here last and introduce yourself to the council and the public.
Okay, I'm Ellen Overby. I've been here a few times before. Mostly you probably know me. I retired from DSHS almost four years ago after a 50-year career. I've worked in the normally known on the street as a welfare agency. And I've had extensive supervisory experience for all but two years of that 50 years I've been a supervisor and supervised almost all the programs that were available at the time, at one time or another. I've also been a part of the Sela community for all my life. I lived in rural Sela growing up, but kept in Sela proper for actually 50 years. So I'm well versed with the community. I know a lot of people in the community. I consider it certainly my home. And I'm very interested in the community that will thrive and become better as we go along. I've had some, quite a bit of volunteer experience. I co-founded the Sela Food Bank in the 80s. I've worked as a volunteer in the food bank also. I worked as a volunteer up at my church. I've been on, I think, two levy committees over the years. And I've been fairly active in the community.
Thank you. What do you believe are council members' primary responsibilities? And how do you think a council member should interact with city staff?
Obviously, their primary responsibility is to advise and consent the mayor. That's part of the job, the council member. It is also our responsibility to interface with the community, be available to people who might have complaints or might actually like something, be involved in the various community committees that I know you guys are. And to legislate or to vote responsibly on the issues that come up, be fiscally responsible.
Okay. On your application, you listed several priorities that you desire for the city of Sela. Please choose one of those and explain what measures you would suggest we take to implement those changes.
Okay. Of course, I'm concerned about every part of Sela's community. However, over the past few months, I've become very concerned about what is happening to our community that we're being in the newspaper negatively more often than we ought to be, that we're having problems that maybe not meeting the needs of all our population, since we have a very, a mix of population. And I feel that this is very important at this time with the council and with the community. My approach would be especially on the people that feel misrepresented or not represented, the people that are not being heard or feel they have not been heard, that we'd be able to address them and determine, maybe discover, find the leadership in each of those communities and start working with the leadership to see what we could do as a city to improve our record with them. I'm concerned that all the things that are going on, that we're losing valuable staff members, especially policemen, and also some city, other sitting people over this whole thing. And it's just too expensive to lose, especially like a policeman. We paid to train, and they have, they're committed to the community, and the community knows them. And they leave, and we bring in somebody else that starts over. This is not fiscally responsible. But I know it happens anyway, but and also the city staff. We've lost some valuable city staff. And I'm concerned about that as a citizen of Sela and as somebody who knows what it is to train new staff and get them hooked up with the community and monitor them and that sort of thing. I'm well versed on that.
Okay, thank you. What is your philosophy regarding fiscal management as far as the city council member is concerned?
Well, we have to be fiscally responsible, develop a budget, which is part of our role. Develop a budget that's fiscally sound, that we're not deficit spending. Unless something absolutely catastrophic happens, that this could happen. But that we're are fiscally responsible and can kind of predict what we're going to need in the future year for each year that we're realistic in our budget. I probably would be considered a fiscal monitor, excuse me, not moderate, not monitor, as far as spending is concerned. And I want to know if we're spending is correct, if we're spending, but I'm not, don't believe in nickel and diming. Maybe there's dollars floating around out there that's going away and we're not watching. So I, I feel I'm very fiscally responsible. I am in my private life. And the city needs to be too.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wittenhagen.
So Ellen, I'll ask the same that I asked the last person. What in the next five years do you see the city's top priorities being?
Well, always growth. That's one thing that is a top priority. And how that affects our infrastructure and how we meet the needs of that. And I think also working on relationships with people. I think that's very important. And that's probably going to be a continuing effort. Isn't, isn't something that's going to be worked out overnight, but it's very important that we do that. We need to be, I think growth is probably the biggest issue. Infrastructure like streets, police department, fire department, that sort of thing, so that we can meet the needs of the citizens we have. And proper, you know, good housing for all levels, not just the wealthy, but some of the people that aren't as wealthy.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
Welcome, Ellen. What, how would you describe the role of the city council as being in the overall operation and governance of the city? And more specifically, what do you see as your role as being a member of the?
Well, I see the council being involved in the governance of the city, I see it as a very important role because it is, you know, working with the mayor. And it's providing oversight to the various departments on the council level. I don't see us interfering in individual agencies within the city. I think we need to make sure on the overall that the cities, that they're performing adequately. But my major role is certainly in governance of the community. Seeing that things are going well and we're not getting a whole bunch of bad press.
Thank you. Ms. Vargas.
Hi, thanks for coming, Ellen. You mentioned in your application that you thought there was a need for more communication between the council and the public. How would you suggest creating that or going about that?
Well, there's several ways. Obviously, council meetings aren't very well attended by the public. Maybe we should have some meet your councilman type of activity from time to time in the community. You know, provide some food and that sort of thing. Being sure that the community knows who we are and what we are. I don't think most people do. In fact, I'm sure most people don't. And that they can recognize us on the street, and if they need to talk to us, they can talk to us. And I'm not sure the public really understands what we do in a council. And if you attend a lot of meetings, you begin to understand that, but the public does not. And I think just getting to meet the council is a very important thing. Being involved in various activities in the community, being visible and let people know who we are, what we are.
Mr. Bell.
Yes, thank you again for applying, Ellen. My question is related to your comment about increasing public interest and input at meetings. And historically, we've had an issue that we have only a handful of people attend council meetings unless there's some personal issue that they're involved in, and then we see a larger turnout. But what would you do to increase that on a normal basis of people being involved?
Well, certainly, we don't need a crisis every week. People coming in complaining about that. We don't need that. But I think just, as I said before, getting people more involved in what the council does, letting them know, meeting us, dating all the people by name, even by site and maybe more publicity on what goes on in the council meetings. Hopefully, part positive stuff. I know we get quite a bit of press coverage on the meetings, but letting them know that they can watch the meetings on educational TV. And that's been great during this time. Just getting out in the community, circulating and just letting people know what's going on.
Thank you.
We don't want a feeling of secrecy or, you know, other than the things that have to be secret, but that we're not pulling something behind the scenes, which people kind of suspect sometimes.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlson.
Hi, Ellen. Thanks for being here. We're glad to have you. My question, obviously, you have some significant experience working in a government agency. What one or two principles from your 50 years of experience at DSHS do you think you could apply to your council position?
Oh, gosh. Obviously, meeting people where they are. Helping people feel they're heard. I was in the social service unit, so that was part of my job, was being sure my staff heard and that our clients heard. I think that's very important, being able to handle somebody that's not happy with you. And a lot of times, it's just, you know, don't sweat the small, small stuff. Deal with the bigger issues that are causing problems. And just basically dealing with people on a equal level. You're not higher than they are and that you're hearing them and you want to want them to know that you're hearing them. And you don't always have to answer all their concerns, but at least I think that's the biggest concept is when you're dealing with people is that. And as far as working with the democracy bureaucracy, I did a lot of, quite a bit of personnel stuff, hiring and firing. I'm well aware of that process. Worked at other agencies a lot. You go developing procedures and that sort of thing. And it usually comes down to the fact that you do understand what they need and you want, what they want and that you're hearing them. And because that's a precept of social work, so that's where I come from, basically. But I also very aware of public service. I know what it's like to be a public servant. And the stresses of it. And my staff, I had to be quite supportive at times and help them along. While still monitoring their work and doing what I had to do.
Thank you.
Ms. Manson.
Thank you, Ellen, for coming in again. We appreciate it. One of your priorities was training for city employees and contractors on communication with the public and working with minorities. How do you feel that can be accomplished?
There's contractors that have that kind of training, which probably would be the way that the council would go, to have, bring in somebody that does some training. That's what we did with the state, anyway. I think certainly monitoring to know that staff is doing what they need to do as far as the public is concerned or meeting our role with the public. The training, I think, especially with police officers is really important. Maybe identification of mental health issues versus criminal issues, handling of people that are causing or threatening. Kind of, or can't make them social workers, but we need to make them aware, anyway. I don't know that Sela uses chokeholds or anything like that. I haven't heard that they did. Just basic training that will help them know what to, what to do when they face certain issues. And I don't, well, I think contractors could probably be what we needed, but there might be only ways of doing that.
Thank you. All right, Ellen. Thank you. We will see you later this evening.
What time? Do you want us, want me to come back?
Monica, did we say like 6:20?
6:15.
6:15.
Okay.
6:15, we'll see you.
And come here or where do we go?
Just back into the conference room where you were, where you started at.
Yeah, just come to, come to the doors of City Hall and knock on it.
Okay, okay. Thanks for, thanks for the interview.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know how to mute this or what we're doing here.
I think Monica or somebody will be in for you.
I'll let you.
Adam May, we have Ms. Saxi up next on our schedule. I'm going to promote her over so she can talk. She's in our list of attendees, so I'm going to move her up now if you're ready.
Okay, we're ready. Okay, we're ready.
If you'll unmute, Ms. Saxi, you are ready for your interview.
Good evening, Ms. Saxi.
Hi there. Can you all see me?
We can.
Great. Thank you so much for allowing me to zoom in. Beautiful city of Cedar City, Utah, breathing clean air.
Yes, I see there's a fire there somewhere, right?
There's they, there's one close enough, but the management people here are pretty good, so.
Yeah, okay. So Melissa is in Salt Lake, everybody, just for your information. Because of the smoke here in the valley lately, the air was cleaner there and she will be back soon as. Soon as Salt Lake's air gets bad and she has to come back home, which will be soon, it sounds like.
Yeah, I'll be here this weekend. I'm driving back.
Okay, all right. So Melissa, take, take up to five minutes to introduce yourself to the council and to the public that's on.
Well, I have been in Cila for a couple of years now, a little over two years. And in my past, I was. My hometown was a small place where I enjoyed growing up with, you know, trees and water and fish and birds and a few neighbors. And then as I went forward with my career, I ended up working in Seattle and Denver and Los Angeles and Olympia and Portland and. Kind of took me everywhere. So I had some urban experience, but in that process, I also kept my kids in small towns. I did a lot of commuting because I believed that a tight community is a really great place to raise your kids. I worked for Fortune 500 companies, among them Wells Fargo, Invesco Funds Group. The Portland Hospital. Network, there's quite a lot of them with Providence and Catholic Health Initiatives, so. I am also a small business owner and a small business consultant. And my specialty with my job was project planning and bringing groups together to create systems. To help businesses thrive.
What do you believe are council members' primary responsibilities and how do you think a council member should interact with city staff?
Well, the councilman's primary responsibilities are to sit and evaluate the. Objectives of the city council to work together closely to solve existing issues on overhead and buildings and. Streets and sewers and water and all of the things that keep our city functioning. There are many issues we've had to deal with over the summer that we're not germane to the city council's existing. Goals or function and. I think as far as I'm concerned. I'm very focused, so if you give me a task to do and people to do it with, I'm able to. Help reach goals.
Okay. On your application, you listed several priorities that you desire for the city of Cila. Please choose one of those and explain what measures you would suggest to implement those changes.
Well, one of the obvious ones for me is the. The city streets and sidewalks. I know that there's been a really good push to make ADA. Sidewalks so that we can get into the crosswalks, but I also know that there's a lot of deterioration in the streets and in the sidewalks. And that there are places where we can improve so that we have better access into town or less interruption, I guess, in the daily flow. There, that's just a, a small fraction of something that I think needs to be worked on. There are. So many, I mean, there's water and sewer and the water treatment plant and there's also. Issues that I've seen in the council meetings before about relocating the police station, making our. Best citizens comfortable in their location.
Okay, thank you. What is your philosophy regarding fiscal management as far as a city council member is concerned?
Well, in my life, I am a fiscal conservative. I have a very big family of six kids and nine grandchildren and. We have been. In a position in our family where we've moved a lot and I've seen a lot of. Different ways that people save and don't save and spend and don't spend. As far as a role in city council is concerned, I think that. There's funds that we have allocated already that we need to be able to talk about how to spend. And then as far as the community's money is concerned, I'm conservative with that. I have little old people in my family who see the. The levies on the bills and they say, gosh, you know, why am I paying 29% on this bill? And I'll say, well, you know, it's part of a. Push to be able to put funds together and that's going to retire out and. I know that as the community looks at their water, sewer and gas bills, they want to be able to pay them. They want to know that the money we collect from them is being used in proper manner.
All right, thank you. What do you believe are council members' primary responsibilities and how do you think a council member should interact with city staff?
Well, the council member's primary job is to work with the mayor and the other council members to put forth and work on. Initiatives that are already in existence to sit down and decide where city budgets should be spent. And as far as, you know, interacting with the rest of city staff, I think that it's kind of a. City council members kind of in the background and they. Operate behind the scenes most of the time unless there's a giant attendance to one of our meetings. And I think that our job is to support their job. Making sure that they have the things they need to do their job. And I know that there's ways that we could support them as a council. Maybe an annual event where we, you know, go, you know, thank the city people and involve the community in that. And I, I know that the community is. Very giving and. Very friendly and very positive for the most part and would, would love to be able to show appreciation to each of our city workers.
All right, thank you. Council members, Mr. Wickenhagen.
So Melissa, thank you for coming. What would you consider Cila's biggest challenges over the next five years?
Well. Community development, I think when we're talking about the challenges of the city. We're not talking about the political challenges. We're talking about the brick and mortar challenges that we have. In, you know, dealing with the police department aging out of their situation that they have down there in the building that they're in. Also. Dealing with water sewer and. The water treatment plant that we have. I know that if we're doing forecasting, if the forecasting reaches where we think it's going to be for. Population in the city of Cila, there are many things that have to be. Developed for the future. We have, you know, kids and grandkids involved in this growth that we have in our city and we want to make sure they have clean water and. That they have, you know, infrastructure here that's going to work in the future. Is there a second part of that question?
No, that was, that was, thank you.
I need to keep track of it all.
Mr. Peterson.
Welcome, Melissa. How would you describe the role of the city council in the overall operation and governance of the city? And more specifically, what do you see your role would be as a member of the city council?
Okay, let me see if I can break that down. Is this similar to the question that was asked before about the role of the city council? Okay, and what specifically are you trying to drill in on so that I can be more specific in my answer?
That's how come I worded it as generally as I did, so you could. Focus in on what you thought the most important parts of it were.
Okay. So I think cooperation is a big thing. We have a lot of different personalities and opinions and experience on the council. And I think that as a council member, it is our duty to talk to the people of our city, see it, what it is that they are concerned about. And bring those, that feedback and those opinions back into the council. Chambers, meetings and make sure that we are conscientiously using our money properly and also. Bringing forth matters that are most important to the community and that also is our burden to. Let the community know what the most urgent. Issues are of the day concerning our infrastructure and our, our personnel. Matter, things that matter to them as far as the day-to-day operation of the city is concerned. I know that as a citizen myself. I look and I think, gosh, you know, building all these homes, do we have enough water? I mean, there's just simple things we can communicate to our community, but. Those are larger issues that we would work on together.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Vargas.
Hi, thanks for being here, Melissa. How do you think the city of Cila should move forward to begin to reduce the divide between the police, the protesters and the city?
That's a good question. I think. You know, the world the way it is, the press can tend to be negative with the things that happen in the city. And yet they do shine a light on our strengths and our weaknesses. And I think right now, in order for the city to pull together, I mean, I believe that as a whole, we already are together. And I think that there are some, you know, parts of our community that are not happy with. Present status of not just our city, but of all cities. So I think it would be important for us to create a community event where people could come and meet our police officers. Come and talk to city council members with their issues and, and also to communicate to them that our police department has never had. Any kind of, you know, restraint problems. They've never had any kind of chokeholds and things like that that you see in other big cities when there are riots. Our police department has always been very responsive to our citizens and caring. And I think that the turmoil that we are experiencing has happened before. I was a kid in the sixties. I've kind of seen it wax and wane. And I do believe that. Much of our own turmoil can be quelled by being more interactive with the public.
Thank you. Mr. Bell.
Yes, thank you for applying, Melissa. You make a statement on your application that you would hope to be the champion of both small and large businesses in the community. Can you expound on what you mean by being the champion of them?
Definitely. So I am a small business owner. I am, I run my business through Amazon. I would love to have a brick and mortar storefront. I think it would be awesome. I believe there's plenty of opportunity for somebody who, like me, is a business developer to go in and work with small businesses and larger businesses on. On expanding their presence, making their advertising better known, helping them to learn how to reach out to the community on social media with advertising or events. And I, I think that, you know, holding some kind of an event where people could meet the people who run those businesses. And help the community feel more invested on how and where they spend their dollar would be a great advantage. And we, we've sometimes see Cila as kind of a drive-through community and I would like people to go, oh. Mary Ellen over here does hair. I really would like to have her do mine. Or, gosh, I didn't know there was a really great florist in town. I always go to Safeway or whatever. So we could help our people that are in the community be seen.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlson.
Thank you for being here. Good to have you. One question I have, you introduced yourself as a, as a fiscal conservative, but you also talked about. Properly, on your application, properly funding parks and recreation activities that. Current and resident, future residents have high quality of experiences. How do you balance fiscal conservatism with, with. Activities that may or may not. Cover their own costs.
Okay, so with those that would cover their own costs, I believe that there are existing budgets for certain things. And we have in the past used levies to collect taxes and revenue for that. There's also the opportunity as far as parks and rec and that area is concerned. For many people in the community to volunteer and volunteer their time and talents. For example. Prior to my daughter moving, she was a yoga instructor and she said, hey, mom, wouldn't it be great if we had yoga in the park? And I said, yeah, that'd be awesome and it would be free. And I, I think that there, once we bring the people into our community and continue to hold. Their interest inside the community, they're going to want to invest if there's a new levy or a fundraiser for the pool or whatever, they're going to see value in that because they will feel valued. As far as my fiscal conservatism is concerned, I believe handling everybody else's money with care is our duty. I also feel like if we have funds set aside and we have not addressed how to use those funds, we have not gone forward with using those funds. That we're not being fiscally responsible and I believe that there's an expectation that we will be.
Thank you.
Ms. Manson.
Melissa, thank you very much for applying and joining, joining us today. If you could create your own committee of any kind, what would it be and why?
Well, I, I love the fact that we have a downtown association. And I think if we were to, I mean, I feel like that is the lifeblood of our city. And I would want to put together a group of like-minded people who would like to go in and help us invigorate the small businesses that we have. I also love projects. I mean, I love the fact that we have. You know. Projects in the, in the future that we're looking at for city water, sewer, streets, that whole thing. And I think that. That sometimes there's research that's required in order to move forward and I am a. I'm a kind of a go-getter. I don't want to, I'm an A-type personality, I guess you would say, but I also know that. When you put a group together, there's a lot of different personalities and. Would be nice to see if we could get like-minded people together for particular projects like that.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Melissa. So you're by phone. We will call you when we come out of our executive session.
Okay, and am I to log off out of here? Is that how that works?
No, you can stay on. I believe, Monica?
I'm sorry.
Yes, you can. You can, you can stay on.
Okay, great.
Okay, all right. We will talk to you later this evening. Thank you.
Our next interview is going to be Steve McKenna. This is him sitting down right now.
All right. There you go. Welcome, Mr. Please take approximately five minutes to introduce yourself to the council and to the public.
My name is Steve McKenna. I'm a retired educator from Yakima School District. I've been married to my wife Julie for 37 years. I have two daughters, an attorney and a physical therapist. And I have three grandchildren. I built a house in Cila in 2014. I used to be the second to last house on Goodlander Road. Now that they've extended it, there's about 30 additional homes up there, including the city manager's house, which is right across the street from me. including the city manager's house, which is right across the street from me. Um, the view is great of each Seela up there. I can see the bridge every morning when I walk out to my backyard. It's awesome. Um, I taught in the Yakima School District for thirty-four years. Um, I ran the International Baccalaureate Program for more than fifteen years. I was also uh, the Davis Wrestling Coach for uh, eighteen years and had many very good teams there. As a history teacher, um, I was very proud of the fact that the students I taught did not know if I was a Republican or a Democrat. Students did not know if I was a religious person or not. I respected all the students in my class, and I felt that they um, uh, respected me. I had almost no discipline problems throughout my entire career. Um, my, a couple of my um, grandkids' favorite places in Seela, of course, um, the King's Row is their favorite drive-in. They go to Seela Gym Kids. Um, and their favorite playgrounds over on Miranda Street there. So um, that's uh, kind of my background. Um, and as I've watched what's been going on this summer uh, in Seela, I thought I could um, uh, when this position opened up, I could help address some of the issues that have been going on and um, as I put in my uh, application there, so.
Thank you. Um, what do you believe are the council's primary responsibilities? And how do you think a council member should interact with city staff?
Um, the council oversees um, what the city staff are, are doing. The city staff reports to them. Um, I'm a fiscally conservative person myself. Um, uh, my house is paid for. I have no debt of any kind, um, even though my house is very new. The way I ran the Yakima Education Association when I was president, um, our fiscal situation is much better than it ever has been. And um, so um, another thing that I think the city council needs to do is set the tone for the way the city staff interact with the public, um, and to set priorities for implementation of policies. So um, I think that's their primary function.
On your application, you listed several priorities you desire for the city of Seela. Please choose one of those and explain what measures you would suggest we take to implement those changes.
Okay, um, well, several things that I, I noticed that there was no one who's listed as an edu- educational uh, liaison for, for the city council. Um, I've, I've had a lot of experience working with educational institutions and working with um, uh, the Yakima School District bureaucracy to solve a lot of issues that we've had over the years. I would um, look to do um, those kind of things. Um, I, I would say that um, I did a master's project that was the um, on the Yakima School District finances, and I'm very good with budgets. I, I'm a very good analyst. I know how to set priorities. Um, and I think that I could be helpful um, to the council in those areas. So um, you know, the first thing you have to do when you, I believe, is to listen and find out all of the details of what's been going on and, and go from there. So um, that's how I would operate.
What do you believe are the council members' primary responsibilities? And how do you think a council member should react with city staff?
Well, I, I, I think um, the council, of course, is going to get feedback from community members on, on interactions between staff and, and the public. I, I think that um, as I said earlier, I believe the council should be um, setting some of those priorities so that because we seem to be having a lot of conflict in Seela. Uh, I've noticed that the, um, the police chief retired early, and another police officer decided to go into teaching. We have um, your HR, the manager, just left. And so I, I think that um, I have some very broad experience in a lot of those areas, and so I, I think I could help uh, address some of those issues. Um, and of course, um, I think that um, you know, we, we need to make an effort to make sure that all citizens in Seela feel comfortable and um, feel that they're not being targeted. And I think that's something that needs to be put out there um, by the city council.
All right. Thank you. Um, what is your philosophy regarding fiscal management as far as the city council member is concerned?
Well, um, as I said, I think you need to be fiscally conservative. You're um, overseeing taxpayers' dollars. They need to see that they're getting good service for the taxes they're paying. Um, uh, and I mean, I just saw, you know, I was just beneficiary of some of the things that have just been done. Um, Goodlander, West Goodlander was just repaved. It's very nice. It's much better than it was. Um, they did a very good job. I was impressed with how quickly it went and um, everything was done in a very professional manner. So I thought that was uh, excellent. Um, I, I think it's, it's, it's our role to look over um, what is happening and making sure that if adjustments need to be made, that we discuss those, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Wittenhagen?
Well, welcome, Steve.
Hi, Kevin. How you doing?
Good.
All right. It's been a long time.
It has.
Yeah.
The Wildcat. So what would you consider Seela's biggest challenges in the next five years?
Um, well, I, I know that there's been a, a tremendous amount of building going on uh, in Seela because I'm up there on top of Goodlander where a lot of it has happened um, recently. I'm sure, making sure that's um, uh, city services are going to all these new um, housing developments and things like that are, are a big deal. Si- si- um, Seela's building a new elementary school and making sure that um, uh, that goes well. That I know the school district is, seems to be making very good progress on, on building that new school. Um, I think, um, you know, I haven't been privy to all the budgetary aspects of, of where Seela allocates its money and how. Um, but um, if I was able to come on board, I would definitely look into that to, to see details because until you have um, some of those kind of things in place, I think um, you can make a lot of adjustments. I do know that we have some empty storefronts down on um, Main Street there. And so I, I think that we need to um, look at some things that we could do to help uh, get those buildings filled up and with businesses. Um, what are some kind of grants that are out there? Um, look at putting together some kind of um, you know, some of the local communities like Yakima and Ellensburg, I believe, have done things to help encourage entrepreneurs to um, uh, put their businesses in place and what kind of things that we could do to make that possible for them, workshops on maybe some kind of how to address the paperwork issues. Um, some things about where we um, put some kind of events to get entrepreneurs to look at these buildings um, that have been empty for um, some of them several years. And so um, so I, I mean, those are just some initial ideas I have on, on those areas, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Peterson?
This is similar to one of the questions you asked before, but from a slightly different perspective, how would you describe the role of city council in the overall operation and the governance of the city? And more specifically, what do you see your role would be as a member of the city council?
Well, a- as, as a member of city council, you're a, a, a member of a team, a team that needs to work together and to um, address issues. I, I think that um, uh, you know, one of the things that you need to do is make sure that you have the right information um, when you are looking at setting priorities and things like that so that um, that you can address things properly. Um, you want to get perspectives from a lot of different people to make sure that you're um, doing things the right way and, and that people have faith in what you're doing. So um, I, I think it's important that um, you know, I, I believe the primary focus of the city council is to set a lot of these priorities out there. And, and so um, I, I think that working together, making sure everybody has all the right information i- is, is very important if you're going to make good decisions, so.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Vargas?
Hi, thanks for being here, Steve.
Thanks. Great having you.
Yeah. You mentioned in your application, you're concerned over the divide in the city. What do you think the first steps uh, the council should be taking to reduce it?
Well, uh, I mean, I think um, I think that some of the rhetoric that has come from the city manager has, has made some of this um, a little bit worse. Um, I, I believe the police chief that left elaborated on some of the micromanagement aspects. I believe that um, I, I think that one of the things that we need to make sure of is to make sure that, that all citizens in the community, not just um, not just one particular group or another, feel that they're valued and that their concerns are something that need to be heard. Um, operating in a peaceful fashion, um, on some of these demonstrations uh, that I saw, I, I had concern when they like shut off the power and things like that. Well, that's kind of doing a demeaning thing to people who are trying to get peacefully protest. And, and so I think that as far as setting priorities, that that's part of the job of the city council is to make sure that all voices need to be heard, not just some voices. And um, and if you don't like some of those voices, that doesn't mean that you just shut those people off. Um, like I said before, um, when I had classes um, that I taught at, at Davis High School, I taught the IB program, which is the um, kids will get college credit if they test well. And um, many of those are very intelligent students that uh, went to universities, all the Ivy League schools, MIT, Stanford. And a lot of those kids were, were very sharp kids. And when I would present information to them, I would not try to bias information. And a lot of times, they would be asking me things like, are you someone, are you a Democrat or are you a Republican? And if you can't tell, then that's, I'm doing my job well. And I think that was, was very important um, to make sure that people that you're working with feel that their concerns are heard and that they're legitimate concerns, um, even if you can't immediately do something about some of those concerns. And so um, I, I think, you know, the first step is to, and to definitely um, um, talk to some of these people. I know they've sent uh, the city council numerous letters and things. I know I sent a letter to the city council asking some questions. Um, and I just think that we definitely need to stop pretending it's not there and that, that it's not legitimate. So that's where I'm coming from on that issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Steve, for applying and being here.
No problem.
I was uh, interested in uh, your application, why you chose that you would be glad to serve on the Parks and Recreation. Um, is that something that has a particular interest for you? And in what do you see as being uh, the direction that ought to be moving?
Um, you know, I know that we, we've had some issues um, with the swimming pool and things like that. I have two grandkids that um, that enjoy the thing, a lot of the parks uh, right now. Um, the, the new park is just great. It's over on um, Miranda Drive there. Um, my grandkids love to go there. My youngest grandchild's not old enough to even walk yet, but um, but I, I mean, I've worked in athletics um, uh, for a lot of my um, teaching career as well. I um, am interested in making sure that there's good facilities around here. Like I said, I, two of my grandkids go to the Seela Gym Kids when it's not closed by COVID. And so um, uh, you know, I, I have some interest in, in those areas. Um, I'm, there's a, I think there's a lot of different things that I could, could um, um, if I was given tasks that I would be able to accomplish or help um, to change some things for the better. So. Um, parks, you know, I know that funding the swimming pool has been a big community issue and, and that kind of thing. And so um, I know that the committee that has worked very hard to, to get that done. And so um, there's, there's a lot of different things I think that could be done with parks that would also um, not only benefit people of our community, but also possibly even bring people into our community. You know, Yakima has, for instance, a three-on-three basketball tournament that they close off a street and, and bring in a bunch of um, basketball hoops. And that brings a lot of kid, people and families in to watch their kids compete. You know, an outdoor event like that would benefit many of the um, merchants around that, especially restaurants and, and things like that. Um, those are some of the things that I think that, that we could do that would work with the Parks and Recreation, but at the same time also benefits um, uh, some of the businesses in our communities, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlson?
Steve, good to have you here. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Like, my question is, uh, what was your, as an educator, what was your biggest challenge uh, throughout your career? And how do you think the lessons that you learned from that challenge could apply to a city council position?
Um, I grew up in Yakima. I was a, uh, I went to Nob Hill School, uh, Wilson. Uh, at that time was a junior high, and of course Eisenhower High School. Well, my first job was at Davis High School. They were our uh, uh, big rivals. And now I was working there and coaching there and teaching there. And, and um, um, you know, and just um, I thi- I think that, that um, buil- dealing with a uh, uh, community in Davis that was the poorer end of town and a lot of times with lower social economic status students, um, you know, a lot of times those people's families had never, weren't educated themselves. And so I, I think how, working to help those students realize that there's a lot more out there and that what they could accomplish, that was one of the biggest uh, challenges. And I, and I think I, I did a um, a very good job as far as um, as I got into um, teaching in the IB program, um, bringing minority students into the program who sometimes were afraid to um, be challenged and that kind of thing. Um, and um, we had a very close to the representation of the uh, school in the IB program, which was the most difficult program. school in the IB program, which was the most difficult program probably pretty much in the valley. This or even east of the Cascades, except for Kennewick has the same program down there also. But you know, I also helped to bring some things into, because the way the IB program was initially set up, the district had, it was primarily math, science emphasis, very heavy. Although IB requires you to, if you're going to be a full diploma candidate, test in six subjects. Well, I brought in some art and music to help bring in some other kinds of students into the program as well that didn't have the same. So it brought more students into the program, enabled more students to get the full IB diploma and some of those kind of things. Those are major challenges for me. And coaching would be a whole other set of challenges too down there. But it was a great experience. And, and I think you know, I really look back fondly on my career and the success we had down there and still have down there at Davis High School.
Thank you.
Hey Steve, thanks very much for applying and joining us tonight. As a retired educator, how do you feel Cila addresses the needs of our youth?
Sierra.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
As a retired educator, how do you feel Cila addresses the needs of our youth?
Okay. I think there's a lot of things that Cila does extremely well around here. You can look, look at the baseball facilities you have over there, that are out there. You've got a tremendous set of athletic facilities that are out there. For Cila, Cila has a, as an educator, Cila has a good reputation. You've got a lot of quality teachers that do an excellent job there. And so I think that I know that the school district, when there was some of this controversy, the school district offered to allow some people to put their chalk art on school district property to allow them to feel that their concerns were being heard. I think that Cila does an excellent job with, with especially the athletic area and so on. I think that having some kind of regular activities. I know, I mean, our whole COVID situation has put a big crimp into those activities for especially teenagers and things like that. So I'm, I mean, I know the community has done a good job of providing very good facilities. You just built a middle school. You're building an elementary school right now. They, and so I think they've done a very good job of getting good facilities for students and those kind of things. I would have to have more conversations with the students in Cila to have see what kind of direction that they would like to go. I mean, having good parks and recreational facilities like the pool, those are good things that are beneficial to have positive activities for kids that, so that they can do good things for the community. That's one of the things that I think that the IB program did at Davis that that a lot of programs don't do. One of the requirements that a program is 150 community service hours in particular areas. And so there's a lot of different things that that could be done that would be beneficial to the community in those areas too. So.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. Thank you, Steve, for joining us. We are going to move to our next council member.
Yes, I okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi. Hello, Ms. Frank. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm good. Okay, we're going to start with a quick question for you. Please take up to five minutes to introduce yourself to the council and to the public.
My name is Taryn Frank. I was born and raised in Cila. I graduated from Cila High School in 2004. After school, I lived here for a couple of years before moving to the East Coast. I lived down the East Coast, going to school for a few years. It was really great. After that, I moved to Tri-Cities with my husband. We lived there for about nine years until we decided that it was time to raise our family where we both grew up. So we moved our family back here in 2016. And in 2018, we moved to the city of Cila, where we've lived since then. I am raising my kids in the school district. They all three attend, they're young, but attend the school district and part of the parent policy committee at the preschool. Yeah, we spend our time in sporting events through Cila Parks and Rec and Cila National Little League and Cila Storm. And that's what we spend most of our time doing now.
Thank you. What do you believe are council members' primary responsibilities? And how do you think a council member should interact with the city staff?
I believe that the main responsibility of city councilmen is to be the voices for the citizens. I think hearing people out, hearing people's concerns, hearing where people want their money spent, we're representing them. And I think that that's the most important thing. I think interacting with the staff, the city staff should be professional. Establishing rapport with people is really important. Establishing connections with people is really important. But all of those relationships should be completely professional.
Thank you. On your application, you listed several priorities that you desire for the city of Cila. Please choose one of those and explain what measures you would suggest we take to implement those changes.
One of the things that's on there that's really important to me is establishing communication between the city and the residents. When I lived in Richland, there, the communication for the different things that were happening in the city was readily available. So different sporting events was available, different activities that were happening at their civic center type locations. When sports enrollment came up, when day camps came up, things that were relevant to my life were, it was easy to find. And I think that the city of Cila would benefit from establishing better communication with people who are looking for the information. The school district has an app that has different features on it where you can go in and find out information about the superintendent. You can go in and find information about nutrition. You can go in and find information about bus routes and different things like that. And a lot of people have access to add information on it. People can ask questions on it. People can pay lunch bills on it. People can use it to their advantage. The Yakima County also has one. Yakima County House has one that you can pay your utilities on, that you can pay your taxes on, that you can, and it doesn't necessarily have all the information on the app. It has information that you can find through that. So there's links that are available that go to this county website or to the fair or different events that are happening. Our website's pretty outdated, I think. I think we have a lot of really great photographers and artists in Cila that we could utilize to upgrade and bring it to a better, more easily used platform.
All right. Thank you. What is your philosophy regarding the fiscal management as far as city council member is concerned?
I think that you have to spend money to make money, but I think that you have to be smart about where that money is spent. I think if it's something that benefits all people or a majority of the people, it's good money to invest. But I also think that there has to be a balance. You have to find the most appropriate ways of spending money.
All right. Mr. Wittenhagen.
So what would you consider to be the most, our biggest challenges for Cila within the next five years?
I think this pandemic is hitting businesses hard. And I think that helping businesses come out of the slump that they're in is the most important thing. And I think that's going to take a lot of time. That would be a main focus of mine.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Similar to another question that you previously answered, but from a slightly different perspective, how would you describe the role of the city council in the overall operation and governance of the city? And more specifically, what do you see as your role as a member of the city council?
I think that it's important to be the resident's voice. I think it's important to hear people out. I think it's important to bring their perspective to meetings, their concerns to meetings. I think that displaying what they hope their wishes are, is the most important thing.
Thank you. Ms. Marge.
Hi, thanks for being here, Taryn. You mentioned in your application, a goal of strengthening and protecting the qualities that make Cila a great place to live. What are those top qualities in your mind? And how would you go about trying to preserve them?
I think having a safe environment for, to raise my kids in is the number one priority. Establishing a good connection between the police department and the city is top priority. There's a little bit of a disconnect at this point, but I think that coming together as overall would be the best thing.
Thank you.
Bill.
Yes, thank you, Taryn, for applying for the job and being here tonight with us. My question is in relationship to one of your statements on the application that you would really encourage more resident participation. And we've tried many things over the years and just historically, unless someone's really involved in an issue, we're not getting a lot of participation, at least through our council meetings. So what would you do that would improve that?
I know that for myself, the time of the day that the meeting is held is hard. It's right in the middle of dinner. I'm getting my kids ready for school the next day. We are doing homework. We're finishing things up. A lot of working parents are getting home at that time. I think maybe playing around with when the meetings start or when the meetings are held would be something that, to try to see if it engages people. I also think that the Zoom meetings help a lot too, because people can watch those when they're making dinner and doing their things to get ready for the next day.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carlson.
Hi, Taryn. Good to have you. One of the comments you made was you would like to, on your application anyway, was that you would like to work hard to increase the trust between residents and city council. What, what are some effective ways that you see we could increase that trust with the residents?
I think that thoroughly comes from communication. I think people want their voices to be heard. And I think that if they are heard and that action is taken, whether it's for or against their concern, I think that establishes a connection between both the city and the residents. I think that it helps to put, I think it puts trust in the actions that are being taken.
Thank you.
Ms. Mattson.
Taryn, thank you very much for applying and being here tonight. In your priorities, you talked about a positive two-way communication platform for communicating between, for city citizens. What kind of platform do you think would be successful to accomplish that?
I think at this point, a public forum would not be the best thing. I do think that when you have, going back to the app ideas, there's ways to submit questions and concerns on those apps. All of them are different. So there's different things that you can, different features that you can utilize on them. But I think that giving easier access for people to be heard is really important.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Frank. We are going to have one more interview. And then we will see you back around six o'clock.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Brain. How are you?
I'm good, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us tonight. Please take five minutes to introduce yourself to the council and the public.
Well, first off, I'd like to start by saying, Madam Mayor, Mr. Case and council members, thank you for giving your time and allowing me to interview for this position. So my name is Jared Brink. I've lived in this community my whole life. I have roots here. I recently bought my first house about three years ago. My wife teaches in the school district at the high school. And my kids luckily are a part of the dual language program here in Cila. Well, my son will be once he starts kindergarten in a few years. So born and raised in Cila. I'm a teacher. I unfortunately, for right now, teach in the Wapato School District, but I have dreams and aspirations of one day teaching in the district that shaped my mind and grew me as an individual. I usually think of myself as three things. First, a husband. I've been married to my wife for eight wonderful years. And then secondly, a father. And I have two children, my daughter Natalie, who's eight, and my son Brody, who's three. And then lastly, a teacher. It was as a student in Cila High School, as a junior in Mr. Erickson's Spanish class, that I first realized I wanted to be a teacher because of the difference that he made in my life. And I realized just the impact that I could have as a teacher on, on young individuals and the gratification that it would bring me as a person to help guide young minds and really help them learn about the world and about themselves. And so that's one of my, one of the things that I'm most proud of. So it's just a little bit about me.
Thank you. What do you believe are council members' primary responsibilities? And how do you think a council member should interact with city staff?
Well, first off, a council member in my mind is one member of seven, or yeah, of seven. And I just feel like it is their responsibility to intake information from professionals and individuals who are a part of our city department, who really have the foresight and the information and just make a a good educated decision that I feel like is in the best interest of our city. As a city council member, I feel like you are a public servant and, and your job is to serve the public. And so to get their opinion and follow along with what the city wants and also converse with, like I said, those department heads. So I just, I, I've been in the council now for eight years at, in my marriage with my wife. So I know what it's like to have an equal partnership and bounce ideas off, off another individual. I also can draw experience from my time as a teacher. Since I teach third grade, I have five other individuals that I collaborate work with and work with. And we come together as a team to create curriculum and all kinds of things and just have a united front. So I, I know what that collaboration looks like and I look forward to having the opportunity to collaborate with you fine individuals.
Thank you. On your application, you listed several priorities that you desire for the city of Seela. Please choose one of those and explain what measures you would suggest we take to implement those.
So being a young individual myself, I feel very strongly like that the young population in our community should have a more focal voice and be more at the forefront. So just activities that people, young adults can bring their families to and, you know, come and congregate, get together, really make a village and a community where we feel comfortable with one another. We can lean on one another, grow as individuals, as, as parents, young parents, and really get involved with our community. So for example, we have a lot of these wonderful parks around us. We've got Carlin Park. You know, we've got Volunteer Park that luckily is right down the road from my house that I love taking my kids to. So we have all these parks at our disposal. Being able to collaborate with community members and have a Seela Community Days-like event, but not just wait for that one time a year, because that really gets our community together, involved and interacting with one another. So if we could spur opportunities where we have more events and activities at those parks to get young parents and, and people out and involved and just use that opportunity to inform them about what's going on in our community, educate them, make sure that we are as transparent as possible with our, our Seela City Service and just really bring Seela together as a community. And I feel like one way we could do that is by bringing in those young adults, those young families and, and getting them more involved.
Thank you. What is your philosophy regarding fiscal management as far as the city council member is concerned?
I'm really glad you brought that up because I have a lot of experience with that in being a teacher and being married to a teacher. So my wife and I need to have a lot of fiscal responsibility. We just bought our house three years ago, like I said, and so that requires budgeting and being smart with our money and, and cutting in areas that we don't need to. So I feel like it is the duty of a city member to make sure that Seela is as fiscally as possible, as fiscally responsible as possible and really taking a good, hard look at our budget and, and what we're spending our money on and making sure that it is serving the needs of our community. And so I do know that I believe coming up here in January or December, there is a new budget that will be established here by the, by the council. And so I've been thinking about that as I've been considering putting my hat in this arena. And so I feel like I would be able to come with some good ideas and really listen to those around me who again have that experience and have that knowledge and, and take in that information and process it and, and really figure out ways to make Seela as fiscally responsible as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Wickenhagen.
So Jared, what challenges do you see, you see Seela having in the next five years? What were some of your major challenges?
Well, the first thing that comes to mind is the divide in our community right now with, you know, whatever side you're on politically. I feel like bringing our community back together and mending that, that tear, I think is the, is the most paramount situation that we see going forward. And right now, I don't know, I, I don't have any idea off the top of my head to, to mend that, but I do feel like transparency as a, as a city and conversations also will be paramount in bringing this community back together and really mending that tear that we have. So I, I feel like if we can encourage more conversations between both sides, because there is a way to be, to have your opinion and be polite and, and respectful and, and come to an agreement and really work together as a community. I feel like we can find that through conversations and just trying to see other people's perspectives, because we only have our own. And through that conversation, we can see through the eyes of another individual and really find some common ground.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
Welcome and thank you for applying for the position. This is similar to one of the questions that you answered before, but from a slightly different perspective, how would you describe the role of the city council in the overall operation and governance of the city? And more specifically, what would, what do you see your role as being as a member of the city council?
That's a great question. I again, I'm going to draw on my previous statement. I just feel like being one member of this, of this council and having all of our department heads at my disposal and the council's disposal, really relying on their expertise and their knowledge and, and asking them questions, being involved, trying to understand as much as possible about our city and how it's run and how it is most effectively pushed forward. Because I feel like the overall goal of a council member is to pursue growth and change and prosperity in our community so that we, our community members have a better life. So drawing on those department heads and their knowledge and then conferring with my fellow council members so that we can all make as educated a, as a decision as possible would be my, my priority.
Ms. Vargas.
Hi, thanks for being here. You mentioned in your application, a desire to expand opportunities for young families. What specifically do you have in mind and how would you go about doing that?
One particular opportunity, I feel like if we could do a, again, utilize one of our parks and Volunteer Park, for example, because it is the most successful and would allow the most families to participate and have an opportunity to be there. If we could utilize that area, bring in food trucks, bring in, I mean, I, I have a friend that I went to high school with who is establishing a brewery here in town. I feel like bringing him in and asking him to be a vendor at a possible event would spur small business, would get young adults out. It could be a date night for a young family. It could be a family outing where they go, maybe there's bounce houses, yard activities. And again, there's that, that play area. So just more small events that really have that feel of Seela Community Days that we all look forward to that one time a year, but just kind of trinkle it in every, every here and there and just utilize those parks. Another idea that I've also had is I know that we have a lot of members in our community who may be older and could use some help in their yard. Maybe we could establish a, like a yard work train somehow and just kind of get people coming together, tackling one house, mowing the lawn, trimming hedges, really helping our fellow community members out. And it's also a good opportunity for us all to come together while helping someone in need.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Jared, for applying and being with us tonight. My question is, I want to go back to your statement that your first priority will be education. Can you expand on who you would target in that? Is that education for citizens, for kids, for staff, or what were you thinking?
Well, I mean, I think no matter how young, how old we are, we are all learners. Nobody is perfect and we can all grow as individuals. So as much education as we can give and for me receive, I think the better we are for it. So no limits on who or, or what education that is. When I had wrote that statement, I initially, obviously, since I'm a teacher, was thinking of the school district and thinking of how to expand and, and better serve our community through our education. And Seela is already taking great strides at that. I look at the kindergarten campus that we have built. I look at the construction going on at John Campbell right now. And I see that we are already working hard to better the education for our, for our young minds. And so that's just kind of where I'm at with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jared, good to have you here. Thanks for, for joining us. As I was reading through your application, I read something interesting that was out of the, the norm. And it says that prior to being an educator, you were a stay-at-home dad. And I'm curious what it was that inspired that and, and how you balanced family versus community versus job opportunities you had.
Thank you for your question. Being a stay-at-home dad was probably the best two, three years of my life. It was amazing to get that time with my daughter and really just pour myself into her. So I, after high school, went to college a little bit and went to YBC and just kind of didn't take it as serious as I should have at first. And so my parents hit me with a reality check and stopped paying my tuition. And so in that time, I went into the workforce, I met my wife. And when we realized we were going to have our daughter, we just realized that it would be, my paycheck would be going towards daycare. And so rather than working all day to not see my child, I chose to stay home. And my wife went into education and, well, not went into, but she got her first job in, in Mapton. And I stayed home with my daughter and I had a wonderful time just being there with her, making memories. But also I knew that I wanted to be a teacher, so I also had the opportunity to give her some one-on-one education. And then also at the back end of that, I did start doing online courses. And I finished my education through Central and YBC and then became a teacher. So I wish that I could be a stay-at-home dad all the time. It's really awesome. I'm, I'm sad that I didn't get that opportunity with my son, because really those memories that I made with my daughter are just, they're, they're some of my most cherished. So I frequently look back on Facebook in the memory portion around that time and I'm looking at the things that my daughter and I did. And so I had a great time doing that. It was a great time in my life, but I am very happy to be an educator now. I, I have had an amazing three years, starting my fourth in Wapato. And those kids out there are amazing. So being a stay-at-home dad changed the way that I look at, at young people, because I had that one-on-one time with my daughter and it was great. So thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Ms. Mattson.
Hi, Jared, thanks for coming in and applying. Can you tell me what you think the best attribute of Seela is and what is the one that we need to work on the most?
Um, I think the best attribute of Seela is really that small-town feel. How close-knit we are, the fact that it's, it's strange for me if I'm driving down a road and I, I see someone and I don't recognize them. I've really enjoyed knowing the people that I'm in a community with and trusting and relying on them. My wife serves on the Seela Community Days Committee and just the, the relationships we've made through that has been absolutely amazing. So that small-town feel is really what drew us here. It's the reason that my wife and I have never had a doubt or a second guess about whether or not we wanted to start our family here and raise our kids here. So that is definitely the best part for me. And I think something that we could improve on would be, the first thing that comes to mind is, is again, activities for, for small families and, or for young families and, and kids in the community. We have parks, we have things like that, but we have to go to Yakima to go to Kids Castle. We have to go to Yakima to go to those bigger parks with like the ponds and sea ducks. And so just a lot of those activities where it's family-centered and activities I can do for my kids. A lot of those outside of Seela Community Days are in Yakima. So if we could bring that, those activities and that business and that opportunity into Seela, I think it would benefit us greatly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Brink. You are our last applicant. We will see you back a little after six.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. So we are going to take about a 20-minute break, 25-minute break, and we will be back for our council meeting at 5:30.
Executive time will need at the end of the meeting.
Okay, 20 minutes.
For real estate, real estate.
Yep, got it, okay. See you in 20 minutes.
And gave the information to the mayor.
Thank you.
We are recording, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We are now called to order. Monica, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilman Wickenhagen.
Here.
Councilwoman Mattson.
Here.
Councilwoman Vargas.
Here.
Councilman Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Bell.
Here.
Councilman Carlson.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand to pledge allegiance and remain standing for prayer from Pastor Chip Hill tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we're thankful again for the opportunity and to be here and thankful for those that you have given to serve and be a blessing to the community of Seela. God, we ask your hand on this. Lord, we ask your wisdom upon them, ask your patience upon our servants, our leaders, our community, to be loving and gracious and merciful to one another during these times. God, so thankful again for those that would continue to give their time and patience and energy to serve and just thankful for the city that you've given us. God, I continue to pray and ask your blessings upon these, upon our town, upon the many issues that plague us as a country and as a community. So thankful again for your mercy and your grace that appears to all men. We love you, in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Thank you. We are now going to go into a 45-minute executive session to consider the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office, RCW 42301101H. And we will be back. And we will be back.
Madam Mayor, if I could, before we go into the executive session, I'd like to rewrite my request for the clarification on our executive session rules, specifically the use of the straw poll. It's the issue I sent the email about at the end of July and mentioned at the end of last council meeting, and I still haven't heard anything regarding it.
Rob, do you want to answer that?
Yes, my plan is to address the substance of the email that you had sent back at the end of July that I first became aware of a handful of days, maybe a week or two ago during our executive session, given the content of what you've mentioned. So I'm going to take the first couple of minutes and address it then. That's the best method, I think, to do it, given again the content that's at play.
Okay. Thank you.
So we are going to leave for 45 minutes, and we will be back.
All right. As a reminder to all attendees, you'll need to actually log off of the webinar, please. And we'll give you two minutes to do so, and you can come back on at 6:20. We have about 30 more seconds until everybody needs to be logged off as attendees, please, before I'll end up having to remove you.
Just a reminder, Sheri, the agenda changed with regard to executive session.
Madam Mayor, before you start the meeting back up again, I would just like to remind council members, I need everybody to sign paperwork. I will put the folder in my box with a pen, so you can drop by when you have a moment and just sign your name where you need to on the sheets, stick the folder back in my box. And if you could bring me back your yellow folders, please, I would appreciate that. Madam Mayor, whenever you're ready, it's 6:20.
Okay, we are back in session. Do we have a motion? Mr. Carlson.
First, Madam Mayor, just a reminder for the record, no decisions were made during the executive session. No votes.
Yep, you're right. No decisions were made during the executive session. Mr. Carlson.
First of all, I'd like to say during our discussions, we felt like there was a really good list of candidates, and we were very pleased with everybody in their interviews. I would like to make a motion to recommend that Mr. Michael Costello be put in as the replacement candidate on City Council.
Do we have a second? Jackie?
I'd like to second. Sorry, I couldn't unmute.
Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. Costello to be our next council member. We have a second by Jackie. All those in favor. Ashley, Monica, do you want to do roll call?
Certainly. Councilwoman Wickenhagen?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Mattson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas? Suzanne, you have to unmute.
Sorry, yes.
Councilman Peterson? Councilman Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Carlson?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, it's unanimous if you will give us just a moment on this end to take Mr. Costello into, join the Zoom meeting again, and we will have our clerk treasurer swear him in one moment.
Okay, thank you. Michael Costello.
I am Michael Costello.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will. I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Council Member.
And of the Office of City Council Member.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Michael. Just sign right there. 20. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Costello.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an agenda change. We're adding an executive session, our 20-minute session for real estate, RCW 42.30.1101C. And that will be at the end. Public appearances, introductions, and presentations. Katrina Hinkle from the Downtown Association.
Good evening, Seela and the council and Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that our Seela Cares Grant applications are due by the 30th at 5:00 PM, and they need to go to Monica at City Hall. We've received 43 of them, and there's a slight change. You can ask for up to 15,000. So we want to see as many of those applications come in as we can so we can get to reviewing and get them in front of council for approval. There is not a downtown trick-or-treat like normal. However, there are a few things in the works with maybe a couple of drive-through trunkor-treats. We're just waiting on some guidance from the Health District to make sure we're compliant. I still have several masks I can hand out to businesses. If you're running out, just let me know. And we will, Seela and Comprehensive Healthcare have partnered together to bring mental health town halls. The first one will be Thursday at 6:00 PM on Comprehensive Healthcare's Facebook Live. We will cover suicide awareness. It will be every Thursday night at 6:00 PM until the end of October. We will have an ability for anonymous questions through Messenger, and we will let everyone know when we get into those town halls how that will work. So just keep your ears open. We'll cover things like suicide, substance abuse, domestic abuse, just several different topics that are really affecting our community right now. And I think that's what I needed to share. Is there any questions?
Katrina, I'd just like to add, the apple boxes around town, the one in front of the pool is beautiful. The ones that you're adding the pumpkins to.
So, yes.
Nice job there.
Thank you. We have some amazing volunteers. I'd like to take credit, but really it's our volunteers and donations of supplies. So we've really just got a great community here.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Getting to know our business, we have none. Communications, oral, Mr. Case.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are presently conducting the regular meeting portion of today's session. State law does not require non-charter code city, such as the city of Seela, to allot time for public comment during a regular meeting between the mayor and city council. Historically, the city has chosen to allot time for public comment during its regular meetings, subject to a maximum of two minutes per commenter and common sense standards of decorum. Recently, those standards of decorum have been increasingly infringed. Those wishing to offer public comments during a regular meeting must comply with the following process and standards. Each commenter must state his or her full name and whether he or she is a registered voter residing within the city limits of Seela. And this particular standard will be enforced beginning with the regular meeting scheduled to occur on October 13, 2020. Each commenter is limited to one comment in a maximum duration of two minutes per regular meeting. A maximum of 30 minutes per regular meeting will be allotted for all public comments. Comments must be constructive and respectful. No profanity, insults, defamation, or director implied personal attacks will be allowed. Criticism of city policy is allowed. Personal criticism of any individual is not allowed. Public process, the public comment process is not a question-and-answer process. Also, each commenter should speak solely for himself or herself rather than purporting to speak on behalf of others, repeating verbatim or nearly verbatim what another commenter has said or repeating what a written document says. In-person comments will be heard from the podium in the order offered by commenters. And during the COVID shutdown, written comments will be read aloud and the order received by city staff and telephonic comments may also be heard. Mayor may cut off any in-person comment or telephonic comment that he or she deems inappropriate. And city staff at the direction of the mayor may disallow or modify any written comment that is deemed inappropriate. These standards are subject to revision. Those who infringe the applicable standards may be barred from offering public comments during future regular meetings. Public comment during regular meetings is not the exclusive method to communicate with the mayor or the city council on any topic. People may send emails or letters, leave voicemails, or request in-person meetings to or with the mayor or any member or members of the city council. The mayor and each member of the city council has personal discretion over how and when he or she might respond to emails, letters, voicemails, and requests for in-person meetings.
All right, thank you. Written, Monica?
We had nine comments submitted, eight of which will not be read aloud. The one that will be is from Kayla Lally of Seela. It says, "Hello and good evening. I would like to address the mayor, city council, and our city administrator. I'd like you all to urge members of the public to stop taking yard signs. These signs have a right to be placed like any other. I think we can all agree that individual citizens should not be removing them, especially not from private property, which has now happened several times." Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Proclamations and announcements, we have none. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. Should any council member request that any item on the consent agenda be considered separately, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and become part of the regular agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Cliff has moved to accept it as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Jackie has seconded it. Monica, is it easier to just do roll call?
No, you can ask each council member to just verbally say.
So all those in favor? Raise your hand. Okay, and opposed? Okay, thank you.
So let the record show that all council members raised their hands. We had no opposed.
Okay, thank you. Monica, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes, September 8, 2020, council meeting, and approval of claims and payroll.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Under general business, new business, Jackie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to bring before the city council a motion to create a youth non-voting representative position on the council. I think that our youth of this city needs to be heard, and I think they could bring very valuable information and a viewpoint to our city. So I'd like to bring this in front of our city council for discussion.
Suzanne?
Could you explain to me what that means? How, you know, how the person will be selected or what it means to be a non-voting member? I'm not familiar with it.
I can give you my thoughts of how I think this should go, but of course we'll have to do this exactly how it can be done. But just a member of our youth from Seela, this person can bring information from their peers on what they feel is important that the city should be looking at. They, of course, are not an elected position, so they could not be a voting member of the council, but they could sit where staff does sit and have input and give reports.
Something to that, Jackie. When we researched this a year or so ago, some other cities have done it and usually it is somebody from the ASB. The leader of the ASB at the high school chooses that person. And then there's, there's a list of, of rules and things that they have to abide by. So I can pull those back out.
Great. One of the things that I would like us to consider, though, would be an application process similar to what we just did for a council that'll give a broad expanse of giving an opportunity to people that may be not be in a, like an ASB leadership role, but we could.
Okay, and, and I do, if I remember correctly, there is an application and, and it could go out to any of the high school students.
I think her computer may have dropped off there.
Yeah, I think so too. Okay, so she, she has, there's a time that she has, she gets dropped, so she'll log back on in a couple of minutes. Russ?
I've actually had a conversation with Jackie on this and I, and I like it. And I like the application process too. My guess is whoever gets chosen, and maybe it is someone from the ASB, but even if it isn't, that that person would like likely attend those ASB meetings and, and give equal reports. And so I, I think receiving comment from, from the school district, from the youth in that fashion, from their perspective is, is important.
Okay. Kevin?
So are we looking for a second and a vote on this?
Well, I believe so. Let's wait till Jackie gets back on. Russ, do you know what, what is, what is the plan with this?
So, so I, yeah, I think that's, I, I think it was summarized pretty well, but by Jackie. It just, just somebody to give input, someone to give reports, someone to give a, I mean, let's be honest, we're, we're not all the, the young ones here. And so having a youth perspective on, on, on events, on activities, on what's important to the youth, I think is, I think is a big deal. I, Jackie's back. I don't know, I don't recall if she made a motion or not. Did you make a motion, Jackie, or do you just brought it up for comment?
You unmute Jackie.
Sorry about that, guys. I did make a motion to create a youth non-voting representative position on council.
So I would, I would second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion.
If, if I could perhaps weigh in here first before a motion is voted upon. Is your motion today intended to establish the position subject to further agreement between the council to refine the position, or have you offered all the refinements that you're considering? What I mean is, what's the potential age bracket for a person to be considered a youth? I imagine we're not going to go down to a true infant or toddler. If you're thinking high school, middle school, or this age to that age, perhaps you could seek to refine your motion if, if need be. And also what would be the duration for any person to serve? Would you want that person for a four-year duration, a one-year duration, a couple of council meetings? You can go forward on your motion as is, but I would suggest that perhaps some further clarifications would be beneficial. So perhaps maybe if the motion instead, and again, you can do whatever you want, but if instead the motion was for the establishment of such a position, subject to further refinement as agreed upon by the council, either informally or via a vote at the October thirteenth meeting.
Okay. Let me take a couple of questions here. Cliff?
Well, a lot along the line that Mr. Case just outlined is that I'm not exactly sure what we are voting on beyond establishing the position that seems to be undefined. It does sound like from the comments that this is something that the council may discuss before many of us were on the council, and so some of you have a much clearer understanding, or at least might have a clearer understanding than others. Are, are we in creating? Are, are we physically creating the position to be defined at some other date, or are we looking to form a committee or whatever to define what that position would be and then bring it back?
Jackie, do you?
I am more than willing to have us create a committee to define everything that we need to define, so I would be willing to withdraw my motion, but with the knowledge that I would like us to create a two- or three-person committee with the appropriate people that we can do exactly what needs to be done and like everybody's saying is outline specifically what we want this position to look like.
Okay.
I think rather than withdrawing, you could just revise your motion to, to say that you're that we vote on moving forward to define the position.
Okay, Roger has his hand up. So Roger, what would you?
I know a few years back, we had talked with the teachers at the high school for the government class about council members making presentations to their class in lieu of them attending council meeting going forward. I'd like to see us at least include them in the conversation. The teachers that are teaching government of what might be appropriate or might be more spread if we did it per semester or only one year to give more students that experience.
Okay, so Russ, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I like, I like Roger's recommendation and, and Jackie, I don't think I would withdraw the motion, but, but we can, we can do a motion to create the position and with a plan to, to, by a certain date to have those discussions and, and make things happen. That way it keeps a priority on this, on this idea.
Okay, so Jackie. Do you want to revise your motion?
I would like to revise my motion. I would like for us to I'm trying to word this correctly, so, to create a youth non-voting representative position on council. And I would like us to create a committee to outline this position clearly and I'd like to have this completed by the last meeting in October. Is that defined clear enough for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would second that.
We have Jackie's motion to move forward with this, to create a committee. We have a second by Russ. All those in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Old business, we have none. Resolutions. Mr. Wayman.
Okay, I had a little malfunction with my mouse here. All right, what we have here is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a police chief employment contract with Daniel V. Christman. Now, this is a pretty unusual situation. This will be the first time we ask a city council from the city of Seela to approve a contract with a new police chief. And as I go into this, you'll, you'll see why. When we look at this, the fiscal impact, there is none. Even though he is coming in with a higher base pay than the last police chief, the, if you look at the pay of the former police chief at a hundred and five thousand dollars a year, plus his longevity pay, which was seven percent, it put him at a similar number, a very close number. So we don't really have much of a fiscal impact on that. The funding source is out of our current expense, as is for all police. Backgrounds findings, in fact. Mr. Christman. He was the unanimous choice of a selection committee formed at the direction of the mayor. Now, we did, before the committee met, we reached out and did some recruitment to ask certain individuals to, to submit their applications. So we did reach out to some individuals and, and they did come in and put in their applications and stood before the committee. That committee consisted of Mr. Bill Harris, Captain Jay Seeley from Yakima PD, myself, John Tierney, a former council member, retired state trooper, and Clifford Peterson from our council. Between that, that committee, we, we had a very, very thorough vetting of the candidates. Daniel Christmas, Christman comes to Seela with an impressive law enforcement resume. And he's had universal praise as a superior leader, manager, and professional. What I'm going to do here now is read a few comments that we received when we went into his background investigation. And these comments are from people that he's worked with in the past. And they cut to the chase with, with regard to the quality of Mr. Christman. The first one I have here is from Monica Alexander, from the advanced training manager at the CJTC, which is where he is leaving from. Just, and this is a, a, an excerpt of a very substantial amount of information she gave us, but Ms. Alexander described Mr. Christman as easygoing and brings a calming effect with him to tense situations. She said he has never had any negative feedback regarding Mr. Christman's interaction with coworkers or others he may interact with. Al Escalera, Chief of Police Sunnyside, Washington Police Department, he worked out there. Chief Escalera said he never had a concern with Mr. Christman. Chief Escalera told me when several law enforcement agencies in Yakima County decided to form a special investigative unit, Mr. Christman was chosen to be his first commander. It was a significant achievement and a tough job. He said Mr. Christman has a very good reputation, would hire him back if he could. Mark Erickson, former deputy Snohoma County Executive. He was the city of Bothell's Chief of Police for fifteen years and he hired Mr. Christman as a police officer. Mr. Erickson said if he were building a police department from scratch, Mr. Christman would be his first hire. He also described Mr. Christman as an amazing leader whom he never had a concern with. I'm skipping over a lot of great comments that we received just for the, just for brevity. But I, I picked out just a few more here. Marsha Harndon, former Bellevue Police Department captain and coworker. She is now Chief of Police at Albany, Oregon, and in their police department. She described him as an academic high thinker and problem solver who was able to work through stressful situations. Chief Harndon said Mr. Christman has strong ethics and is trustworthy and professional. And finally, I have Robert Udell, our sheriff here in Yakima County. Sheriff Udell told me he has known Mr. Christman for many years. He said Mr. Christman is the type of person who can work with anybody and will be a great asset to the Seela Police Department and tremendous resource for all of Yakima County. He said there has never been a concern with Mr. Christman's integrity or professionalism. And what I've done here is hopefully Theresa has got John Tierney online and he's going to have a few comments for you. He was, as I said, on that selection committee. John, you there?
Hold one second. He'll be right up.
Mayor Raymond, Mr. Wayman, council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. As Mr. Wayman indicated, I was privileged to be on the selection committee for Mr. Christman and I, I guess probably the best, best thing I could say about that interview process is that I have interviewed I would say hundreds of people for law enforcement positions throughout the state of Washington, not only for the Washington State Patrol, but for King County Sheriff's Office as another major agency, Spokane, and so forth. I've interviewed people for promotion to sergeant. I've interviewed people for promotion to, or appointment to the chief's positions. And I have to say that in all the years that I have done that, I have never in my life been as impressed with a candidate as I was with Mr. Christman. He is head and shoulders above everybody that I have ever seen. He was head and shoulders above the other candidates who applied for this position in Seela. And, and I know that I believe you're, you're going to be voting for an approval on a contract this evening. And, and one of the things that I did notice is the basically a termination clause for, I believe it's six years. And I would fully, fully approve or suggest the approval of that because it lapses over the political arena of service for an appointed officer. I believe Mayor Raymond has about three years left on her term. And it would be very unfair for Mr. Christman to lose his employment if we had a new mayor elected that would want to change the administration of the police department. And if they did, he should have some remuneration for that. And I believe the, the contract that you have before you is about six months, so. But I think that that would be very appropriate. And again, I think that we are very blessed here in the city of Seela to have somebody of his caliber put his name in and be listed for appointment to this position of chief. So, thank you.
Do I have any questions from the council? Before, before, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to take a couple of questions from you all and then hand it over to Daniel Christman. So you can ask him some questions, but if you have any administrative questions or questions about the process, I can answer those. Okay, I see no takers on that. So Daniel, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Thank you. Well, first I need to say how humbled I am to hear such kind and gracious words from so many people. It's the first time I've heard that, Mr. Wayman, those excerpts. Thank you. That means a lot to me, Mr. Tierney. Thank you for your comments as well. And I suppose Mr. Peterson as well. He was on that council, on that panel. Thank you very much for your time. I wanted to take a moment, maybe just introduce myself to you and, and let you know, you know, who I wanted to take a moment, maybe just introduce myself to you and let you know, you know, who I am and and where I come from. I'm a rare native to Washington State, born in eastern Washington, a small farming community in the Palouse. I've lived in eastern, central, and western Washington. And as a teenager, I lived in the lower valley, and I went to Grandview High School. Then my parents moved us to the Seattle area where I finished high school and attended college. I got my associate's degree in criminal justice. My bachelor's degree was obtained at Boise State University in social science, and I've earned a master's degree from Boston University in criminal justice as well. I want you to know that I've also attended Northwestern College Police Staff in Command and as well as the Washington State Command College. I am certified as an executive level peace officer in the state of Washington through the Criminal Justice Training Commission, where, as Mr. Wayman said, I'm currently working now. In the midst of college, I started my adult career as a medical legal death investigator. Spent 15 years in King County, Ada County, Boise, Idaho, and then back to Snohomish County, investigated over 5,500 homicides, suicides, accidental deaths, and undetermined deaths. Ended up teaching criminal investigations at the academy. I spent, you know, that 15 years, I decided at the end of that that I'd had enough of that and transitioned to law enforcement, was hired by the Bothell Police Department, as you heard Mr. Wayman say, which is just north of Seattle, if you don't know where Bothell is. And I served as a patrol officer, bicycle officer, school resource officer, a traffic officer, and I earned my collision reconstruction certification through the Washington State Patrol. I was a motorcycle officer, a crime scene investigator, and a police academy training officer. So as you can see, I didn't sit still very long. I tried to diversify my resume as much as I could. As a sergeant at Bothell, I supervised patrol, traffic divisions, as well as civilian personnel. And then after 17 years at the Bothell Police Department, I was recruited to take over the Snohomish County Medical Examiner's Office, an office that was in disarray and under a lot of turmoil. And I was there for just a year, but in that year, I was able to reform the office and provide a five-year strategic plan to get it back on track and presented that to the county council. In 2015, I left the MB's office and accepted the operations commander position in Sunnyside, a department just down the road from from Seala, as you know. And the new chief there hired me to take on a large-scale cultural shift in the department, side and side by side with him. He worked on the outside, and I worked on the inside, reforming that department. And then a little over a year ago, I was asked to return to the police academy and take on the initiative nine forty work, the police reform initiative that came into play between December of 2018 and January 2019. That's what I've been doing ever since. I want you to know that I'm a lifelong learner. I've completed many, many hundreds of hours of training that's prepared me to step into this role. And and I'm very, very happy to be here tonight and looking forward to fielding any questions. And I want you to know that my wife is on this ride with me, too, and she's very excited about coming back to Yakima County. We have a lot of friends there, and and we look forward to becoming a part of Seala. And I guess with that, I'll just close and open myself up to any questions that you might have.
Russ.
Mr. Christman, thanks for being on here and and fielding some questions. One of my main questions is why Seala when you're at such a large department previously? Why why here in this small town of Washington?
Well, thanks for that question, I appreciate the opportunity. I I wanted to come back to Yakima County. There are very few opportunities that present themselves in in Yakima County for a chief's position. Folks tend to stick around a while. I will be completely transparent with you. At the time that Seala opened up, there were two other positions that came open, and I got a phone call from one of those Yakima County agencies asking me to take over their agency. But I was looking for something a little bit bigger, something with a city feel to it, but still a area that I was comfortable with, with residences and businesses also. And so I I stuck in the the run for the Seala position. I like the city, I like the area. I will tell you that when I worked in Sunnyside, I lived down by the Tri-Cities. And my wife and I often came to Yakima for dinner or music or anything that had to do with entertainment. There weren't a lot of opportunities down in that area. So I knew that if I was going to come back to Yakima County, where I have all these friendships and relationships, that it would need to be centered closer to Yakima. So Seala is a perfect fit for me. I'm comfortable with the size of the department, looking forward to leading the men and women in that department and finding out what can be done to help them better do their job more efficiently and effectively.
Mr. Peterson.
To what Mr. Tierney and Mr. Wayman had to say about the interview process, I was honored to be on that board and to and be a part of that interview process and echo the sentiment that we all had about Mr. Christman being a very well-qualified and unanimous choice for recommending. And so I moved that we approved the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the employment agreement with Daniel Christman for chief of police position.
I'd like to have some some more discussion on the contract specifically, but.
I would second the motion.
Okay, so. So I have a question. The questions about the contract, Don, do we? Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have a you have a motion, you have a second.
Right, okay, so I have a motion to approve it by Cliff, a second by, was it Roger? Second by Roger. All those in favor?
Madam Mayor, can I interject that you are allowed to take discussion about the contract and not rush that through, even with a first and a second motion? We've done that same very thing in the past. We've had discussion about the contract. I'd like to discuss the details of this contract.
Okay, I am going to go to Rob right now.
I think what Russ is saying is probably closer to accurate. So what what discussion would you like to have, Russ?
I I would specifically like to talk. Frankly, I'm not a big fan of the severance, but I like the re the the sunsetting severance. So I think that's a good middle ground for me. One of my concerns frankly is is the the amount of praise that has been lumped on to Mr. Christman. Sounds like a phenomenal choice. I have no problems with Mr. Christman. Yet, at the same time, we're we're putting him on a six-month probation when he's obviously the person here. So and and the other concern I have is we are a strong mayor, form of government, yet numerous parts in this contract call out that the city administrator can make the is the only person to make those decisions. And I would think that the contract would indicate the mayor or their designee, which still could be Mr. Wayman. And the reason I'm concerned about that is if we lose a city administrator, then there's no way for the council or the mayor or mayor pro tem to have input until a new city administrator is hired. So if if a mayor leaves, we still have a mayor pro tem, there's still a succession plan. But if there's if there's no city administrator, then you can't have, for example, an unemployment review until you've hired. You can have them annually, like it calls out here, performance standards evaluations. But if you need a an employee review in the middle of that year, you have to wait till you hire a new city administrator because that's what the contract says. So those are my two biggest concerns, that it's it doesn't say that it should say the mayor or their designee instead of the city administrator, because that is exactly opposite of a mayor, the strong mayor form of government, in my opinion. And and if I if someone, I guess I'm trying to figure out why if we're if we're giving a severance package, then I have to assume it's because this person's not wanting to uproot their family for something that's not going to work out. Yet, we're putting him on a six-month probation when he's the unanimous decision. So my recommendation would be to change two things, two parts about this. One would be to make it a mayor or their designee in lieu of the city administrator, which, again, still could be the city administrator, but that puts the puts the decision-making on the mayor, and it doesn't supersede the mayor's decision-making. And second of all, would be to, as as the only other contract for an employee that we have in the city of Seala specifically calls out for no probation on that contract. I would say if if this man is the right man, if he is the unanimous decision, and if he is as qualified as he is, that there that it follow the same suit as the other contract and have no probation.
Madam Mayor, I see no issue with regard to the six-month issue. That was really kind of a boilerplate item that we had in there. So, you know, no issues with that. I have a lot of confidence in that in this hire enough so to to agree with Mr. Carlson on on that aspect. With regard to his other concern about a mayor's designee vice the the city administrator, whether the city administrator is sitting or not, the mayor has the the only authority I have is through the mayor, the the city administrator. And that can be delegated at any time to another employee by the mayor. So I'm not I'm not concerned about this a as far as being able to administratively deal with this. If, for instance, there's a gap in the city administrator job, the mayor or the mayor pro tem can appoint anybody on the staff who would more than likely be a city attorney or or a department head that could do that or, you know, or clerk treasurer. So I I don't I don't see the necessity in changing that language, but of course, we'll leave that up to the council.
Yeah, and and I would I would disagree with that simply for the fact that your ability to make a recommendation, to make a decision or or a performance evaluation or anything like that still holds as the as a designee. But per the contract, and I mean, it says, it says, or when in terms of performance standard evaluation, it says roughly annually thereafter, or when otherwise deemed appropriate by the city administrator, which tells me that the mayor, per the contract, cannot have a performance evaluation with the police chief. So I think I think it's vital, there there could still be a gap in in the city administrator even two weeks. But I think as a strong mayor, form of government, I think that needs to say the mayor or their designee.
Madam Mayor, no issues. It's this is we're we're pole vaulting over tiny pebbles here.
Russ, if we could be a little more specific, are you talking? Let's talk about this topic of city administrator designee. Are you specifically focusing on only paragraph five of the proposed contract? Or are you focusing on something else as well?
Yeah, the the any any time where it where only provides the authority to the city administrator. That was one, there was put on the spot here, but I'll see if I can find another one.
I think we're talking about paragraph or paragraph eight.
Let me offer this. So if you're to bring forth a motion, I would suggest that your motion be perhaps worded such that the contract, if it is to be approved, would be in the form as currently before the council members. But you could do your city administrator concept amendment one of two ways. The motion could be everywhere that the contract says administrator. A parenthetical could be added immediately thereafter to say, or such other designee as the mayor may choose in parenthetical. Or a second way to go about it would be to add just another paragraph at the end, I think there's a miscellaneous title eight kind of as miscellaneous terms. So it'd be a new paragraph eight point seven that would say something along the lines of every instance in this contract that refers to powers or action taken by, quote, city administrator, end quote, can instead be taken on a case-by-case basis by the mayor's designee. That's how I would suggest perhaps going about that. But of course, you can bring forward whatever motion you would like on the city administrator idea. And then as to the severance, I mean, we could talk about that. You're asking, it sounds like there perhaps will redact or omit some terms that are presently on the page.
Yeah, my concern is not as much with the severance as it is the probationary period.
And Russ, you're you're asking just to eliminate the probation period.
Correct, correct.
Well, yeah. I follow what you're saying, but there's I don't think the phrase probationary periods in the contract, if I remember it correctly. It says performance will be reviewed at six months. Whether it says that or not, performance can still get reviewed. And then the severance is only triggered if a termination in certain circumstances happens after six months.
That's correct, yeah, in the in the without cause section, it talks about that doesn't start till August, excuse me, April 14, 2021.
That's what I'm saying, are you wanting to redact that then?
Yes.
So in paragraph six point one, the sentence, it starts towards the right-hand side of the column, but midway down, in the event the city effectuate a termination without a without cause termination, and then striking the words on or after April 14, 2021. And continuing as written, striking that and the parenthetical, which is or is roughly six months after employee's date of hire in parenthetical, and also striking the word but. So instead, that sentence would read, in the event the city effectuates a without cause termination earlier than October 14, 2026.
Correct.
So if I understand the sentiment of your two potential motions correctly, if you can remember what I said out loud, that's how I'd suggest you stylize your motions. Or perhaps you could bring a motion to approve the resolution subject to my creation of the changes as I verbally articulated here on this recording.
Yeah, my my personal opinion is that the that the contract should represent that strong mayor form of government. So anywhere that it says city administrator, it should be the mayor or their designee.
That's fine.
Okay, Suzanne, you have a question?
I was going to speak to an issue that's largely already been sorted out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the table from Cliff. Do we have a now, is this motion with the revision?
The initial motion done by Councilmember Peterson and seconded by Councilmember Bell was to approve the resolution.
Okay.
Without any amendments.
Okay, so Cliff, you have your hand up?
I do, so does Russ need to make amend? Move an amendment?
Actually, because your motion was brought first and was seconded, even though further discussion occurred thereafter, we either need action on your motion, an up or down vote, or you need to withdraw your motion in order for a different motion by Mr. Carlson to proceed.
Yeah, you Cliff, you. Yeah, you can, Cliff, you control the the motion, you can keep it as you want, or you can amend it.
Okay, I will amend my original motion. To authorize the mayor to sign the contract with uh. Mr. Christman for Chief of Police. Pending. Um, the. Um, changes. Which Mr. Case has, has. Indic- uh, as he has indicated, clarifying. All of the places that it makes a direct reference to city administrator to in. Indicate it is by the mayor or designate.
Are you also wanting to strike the language that we discussed in paragraph six point one?
Yeah, I'll put that into.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second, this is Kevin.
I'm the second, yes.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion by Cliff, a second by Kevin. Roll call, Monica.
Councilman Wickenhagen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mattson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilman Peterson? You have to unmute Cliff.
Yes.
Councilman Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Nowobowski.
Okay, first I have to ask, am I unmuted?
Yes, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much. So what you have before you is a resolution. To sign an annual update to our section one twenty five cafeteria plan. Since two thousand and four. The city, in accordance with the uh, Internal Revenue Code, has adopted this uh, section one twenty five cafeteria plan. Which allows us to exempt voluntary insurance contributions. In particular, we have something here called VIBA. Uh, insurance, and as a result of this plan, the city is um. Does not have to deduct uh, FICA. Social Security from the employee share, or or does the city have to match FICA on that? So there's a savings to both the employer as well as the employee. Uh, we use a marketing firm called Northwest Marketing Resources, Inc. To provide us this annual contract. And uh, this year, they surprised me a little bit, they upped the price by twenty bucks, but it only costs us a hundred and seventy five dollars. A year for them to maintain this for us, to give us this annual update. And uh, we, we definitely save much more than that, as well besides the savings to the employees. So I, I ask you to approve this annual update.
Council, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
So we have a motion to approve by Roger, a second by Kevin, roll call, Monica.
Councilman Wickenhagen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mattson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilman Peterson?
Yes.
Councilman Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Carlson?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Um, in three, Mr. Wayman.
Yes, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an amendment to the coronavirus relief funds interagency agreement. If you recall, we uh, have a uh, a slug of money approximately. Two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars uh, for, for coronavirus virus relief. Uh, that's uh, been funneled down to us from the federal government through the state. Um, the, the current amount was uh, two hundred and thirty eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, the. This amount has been increased by the Department of Commerce to one hundred and nineteen for, with an additional one hundred and nineteen, four hundred and seventy five dollars. For a grand total of three hundred and fifty eight thousand, four hundred and twenty five dollars. So um. This is an amendment uh, for the city to accept these additional funds for distribution. Most of it will go uh, to the distribution to our local businesses that qualify for this relief. Um, I have had a, a new requirement possibly, and we're exploring this from the police department for more computers. And it may bite into this one nineteen, I I'm not sure. But uh, we're gonna do everything we can to get this money distributed to the community. Committee was formed today, as you know, uh, Katrina told you all about it. And uh, I think uh, we're gonna um, be able to distribute quite a bit of money. Uh, in our, inside our small commercial uh, community. That's all I have.
Suzanne?
I, I just wanted to make a comment, I um. About what a great job Katrina's doing, getting the word out to all these businesses and how hard she's been working to be sure that. Anybody who's possibly eligible knows about this and um, the increase in funds, I think is just going to be such a gift to our businesses. Um, the increased possibility from five thousand up to fifteen, the businesses I've spoken to are just. Really encouraged and excited by it, and um. I just really wanted to give kudos to Katrina for all the work that she's put into it.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to uh, accept a resolution authorizing mayor to sign the amendment to the coronavirus. Coronavirus relief.
Thank you, Kevin. And Suzanne, are you?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Um, my signing of it by Kevin, a second by Suzanne, roll call, Monica.
Councilman Wickenhagen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mattson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilman Peterson?
Yes.
Councilman Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Carlson?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Ordinance says, Mr. Nowobowski.
Uh, this uh, ordinance is a, a budget adjustment for legal services. It will uh, increase the, the, the budgeted legal cost by four thousand dollars. Which satisfies the contract amendment, which was made at the uh, August twenty fifth meeting. Uh, with the effective dates of September one through December thirty one. Uh, the costs, as you can see in the AIS, are allocated amongst uh. Oh, about five different funds, five different funds there.
Mr. Carlson.
Uh, as I brought up the RCW last time, I'd like to uh, make mention of a resolution of uh, discussions and research. Uh, Mr. Case and myself had a conversation, and I know uh, Mr. Wayman did some research, and I did my own research as well. Um, and we did conclude that as this is a contract, that this uh, that the mayor is uh. Eligible to break that tie, and so that that ordinance did, that was, that was taken previously, did indeed pass, so I just wanted to. Give my update and input on that.
Thank you, Russ.
One brief clarification, it was a resolution. Previously, now it's an ordinance, and that was just a slip of the tongue, I imagine, by Councilmember Carlson there, we all get it.
Thanks.
I move to approve an ordinance amending the twenty twenty budget for legal services.
Thank you, Jackie. Cliff?
I'll second it, I didn't realize my name was, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Jackie, a second by Cliff, roll call, Monica.
Councilman Wickenhagen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mattson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
No.
Councilman Peterson?
Yes.
Councilman Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Carlson?
No.
That is five yes and two no.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Nowobowski.
And uh, what you have before you is an ordinance that will amend our twenty twenty uh, base salary ordinance that was previously passed. In regards to the position of police chief. It uh, it is an amendment that changes the monthly pay rate from eight thousand, seven eighty eight. To nine thousand, three seventy five. Um, as was explained in the presentation of the contract. This still uh, results in the same amount of budgeted payroll costs for the police chief position as currently exists in the budget.
Uh, Russ?
Um, I was reviewing the cities, although I, I realize this is more of a uh. I don't know, just a, a general discussion and just a. Probably needs to pass anyway, but I was reviewing the cities used for this, uh, and it. Didn't look like the cities we've reviewed in the past. Um, and I'm just curious what changed and why we've, why were you now using this list of cities versus the ones we've used previously?
Yeah, and I'm gonna say, I've, I've not been involved that in the past for us. Um, I went into the AWC salary survey pool, and I requested. A report of cities or police chief positions from nine thousand to twelve thousand population. We're currently just over eight, and my thought was, was to not look below eight. Or, you know, anyhow, uh, nine was the starting population that I used.
So, and and maybe I misunderstood this, but my question, I mean, my, my understanding is previously, we've used. A very specific list of towns, or or at least a very similar list that includes uh, like Prosser and Quincy and. You know, Yakima Valley cities. Regardless, I mean, I I just, I think that's more of a discussion for long term and wanting to know why we used it, but I still think. Uh, we should move forward on this.
Yeah, and and all I can offer there is, yeah, I've not been involved in uh, determining uh. Uh, salary surveys uh, in the past, so, yeah, um. I, I know that our human resource person that's no longer with us. Uh, Joe Henny, Public Works Director, helped me understand the other day that uh, Andrew. You know, would have used some other cities than perhaps what what I had used. Um, there, there are eastern Washington cities on here, but possibly not at that same pool.
This is Kevin, the ordinance, amending the ordinance twenty ninety regarding the base salary.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Kevin, a second by Suzanne.
Yes.
Roll call, Monica.
Councilman Wickenhagen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mattson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilman Peterson?
Yes.
Councilman Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Carlson?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public appearances, we have none, reports and announcements. Um. Let's see, who do we have, uh, let's do um, Deputy Chief Lang.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Um, I don't know that we have a lot to report right now, except for the uh, the uh, big incident in our area has calmed down. There's still a lot of fires in the area, all of our apparatus um, from the uh. From the capital budget have uh, been completed, everything's in service. Um, we did have a late incident today, so sorry, I didn't have time to prepare anything for tonight. Um, but the guys are starting to get rested, and hopefully uh, things will slow down, so everybody still be safe, everything is still dry. It's about the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Deputy Chief Sting?
Uh, good evening, council members, hey, it's, I just really, much like Chief Lang, I have much to report tonight. Uh, I will tell you that from the police department perspective, we are anxious and excited to have our new chief here. Uh, we look forward to doing great things together.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Nowobowski.
Dale, you'll have to unmute.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay. So, as I was saying, I've been hard at work on the twenty twenty one budget document, because uh, it's that time of year. And uh, you will be receiving the budget uh, calendar coming up here shortly. Um, this year, we're going to hopefully pass our twenty twenty one budget at the first council meeting in December. So uh, anyhow, that moves forward. Uh, this morning, we did have the pleasure of receiving an audit exit conference from the Washington State Auditor's Office. Regarding their completion of a two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen financial and single audit. The single audit was uh, required because on East Goodlander, we had received and expended in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In federal money. Um, they provided us with uh, what's called an unqualified audit opinion on our financials, which is. Otherwise referred to as a clean report, so that's always a good thing for financial people, we appreciate. That kind of an end result. Uh, on the single audit, they said there was no violation. Uh, no, uh, what inappropriate uh, spending of monies. However, they did write what they call an internal control finding. Because they um, indicated that our written procurement policies. Do not adequately reference federal purchasing requirements. And uh, the concern is, is that if federal purchasing requirements are more restrictive. Than the state requirements, that uh, it, that we would be in violation. And unless we write that into our procurement policies, we run the risk that we not, might not do the right thing. So anyhow, I'm working with them to obtain. An understanding as to the modifications that we need to make to our written procurement policies, so that we're. No longer deemed uh, deficient in that regard. Uh, it's been an interesting conversation with them, and I will continue to pursue that, so that we put a smile on their face. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I see, Zach, do you have a report? Zach, if you're talking, you need to unmute.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, sorry, I'm having dinner with my family, but I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Um, do we have, we don't have Mr. Henny on here tonight, is that correct? Okay, um. Okay, uh, let's do counsel, Kevin, do you have a report?
Uh, nothing to report, I do have a meeting tomorrow with the Akma Visitor Convention Bureau. Uh. Still, the information I'm, I'm reading and getting is that hotels, motels are in a great deal of stress right now. And uh, I will have a updated report after tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Mr. Peterson.
I would like to uh, thank all of those who applied for the position, vacant position. On the city council and, and for their interest in, in. Getting involved in the um, community and uh, just welcome Mike aboard.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Yes, I want to welcome Michael aboard also, and uh. Congratulations. Um, report on the. Report on the pool. We have come very close. We accepted the, the final document on it, so we're, we're very close on that. But I wanted to report from our board meeting at Spurso last night that we are exceeding revenue to labor costs. So we're dipping very lightly into the funds this year. Granted, it's on a much reduced scale for everything, but we will be operating through October second. And I want to personally thank the many residents of the city who have given extra money to us. We had a lady just the other day while I was there who gave forty dollars and said, keep the change. We want you to continue to operate, and we appreciate it. So it's just wonderful people in the community that have supported that. Several people have given a hundred dollars to allow us to extend until October second. So thank you to the city for all of that, and we're moving forward. The last thing I have to report is that Councilman Carlson and Peterson and myself were appointed to a committee to come up with some kind of information on a code of conduct for all areas of the city and including council, senior staff, and other employees. And we have that information coming back as directed for a study session. Monaco will be sending that out. Didn't come out yet, but we're asking for a study session at the next council meeting about an hour prior, so that would be at four thirty. If we can do that, and you'll have the information this week yet, that you can read up on the recommendations that we've made. That's it.
Thank you, Roger. Suzanne?
Thank you. Would love to join everybody else in welcoming you, Mike, to council, as well as Mr. Crispin to our police force. I'm excited to have both of you, and I have no other report.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson?
Welcome, Michael, as well. I, the only part that I know about Michael is, was his stories at the Police Citizens Academy. And tell you what, if you have, if you will have a chance to chat with him and hear some of his, his adventures, they're quite entertaining. Anyway, welcome to Mr. Crispin as well. The committee that's to select, to make recommendations for the CARES grant money has changed slightly. I was not sure if someone was going to bring it up, but one of the members had a medical scenario and had to leave. And so that person has been related, replaced. And so there's three people still in the committee. Barb Petrie, Dave Smebak, and Brian Rafferty. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Jackie?
Well, welcome aboard, Mike and Mr. Crispin. Looking forward to working with both of you. There was a Yakima Valley Conference of Governments meeting last week. And there was a moment of silence in memorandum for, or memoriam for Commissioner Norm Childress. So he was a huge part of the community and a great leader. He'll be very, he'll be missed quite a bit. The program was very informational. It was some, just some legislative and congressional updates. And so it was just interesting. So I just wanted to, again, give my condolences to family of Norm Childress. That's my report. Thank you.
Michael?
Since I've only been here an hour and a half, I don't have anything to report. However, I do want to thank you all for having faith in me and making me as your selection, fill the council. I will do my best not to let any of you down. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you and with the citizens of the city of Seela. And hopefully I'll start learning fast.
All right, welcome. Thank you. Mr. Case?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Wayman?
I have to report.
Okay, um, you know, I would like to welcome you, Michael. You, you, you seem to fit in, and we're looking forward to working with you. As for Mr. Crispin, I am, I can't tell you how excited I am to have you onboard. I sat through the, the process and listened to, to all of your answers. You were spot on. I'm excited to have you in our community. I think you will be a great asset to our department and, and to the people of Seela. So welcome. When you get moved in, we'll get together and chat.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So we are going to go into an executive session, forty-five minute session to consider the call. Sorry, a twenty-minute executive session for real estate RCW four-two dot three zero dot one one zero one C. And then we will come back.
As a reminder to members of the public, you are asked to leave at this time. You're welcome to come back on at the end of the meeting. You will have two minutes to log off, please.
We do have one other thing to discuss when we go back on the record, and that was the study session for the next meeting, whether everyone was in agreement with that or not, so.
You are live and ready to go whenever you'd like. I told the public eight o'clock, so if you want to wait two minutes, that'd be just fine as well.
Okay, we're going to wait the two minutes.
No yawning, Sherry.
It's all them, it's all them paydays Russ gave me, or Roger gave me.
Roger.
Yeah.
I'm right there with you.
I don't know, this is changing quite hard. I've been in it for twelve hours.
Roger, whenever you bring those paydays in, there's always these little mice sneaking down the hallway after Sherry's left the building.
Oh, yeah, I had to go buy a lock for my drawer.
It was probably Bones.
No, he's in the chair.
Madam Mayor, I'm ready whenever you're ready.
We are now back, back on the record. No decisions were made during executive session.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that we authorize Mr. Wayman to negotiate as long as the price does not hit the floor discussed in the executive session.
Okay.
We could just have more clarification, negotiate as to what, if you could describe the property, real estate in question.
Do you have an address on that, by chance? I don't have an address.
Are you still online, Don?
Yeah, I, I, right, so I'll read this into the record. That would be lot number one eight one four three six dash two one four two four.
So my, yeah, my recommendation to clarify would be the lot number read by Mr. Wayman and to allow him to negotiate as necessary, sticking to above the floors established in executive session.
Mr. Peterson?
I'll second.
Okay. All those, all those agreeing with Russ's recommendation, raise your hand. And opposing, seeing none. Okay. You have your, you have your agreement there. Okay, let's discuss the study session for the next council meeting. Roger, are you saying an hour?
Yes, we're asking for an hour. I think it's pretty simple when you get the information.
Okay.
Go over it, actually. You know, individually, you could contact one of the people on it if you had any real difficult questions. And, and we could maybe clarify those ahead of time, but not as a group.
Okay.
Okay, has ever, everyone agreed up to that at four thirty?
Everybody okay with that, Michael? Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, so the next council meeting, we'll have a study session that starts at four thirty. Monica?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
There, you getting that down?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
To allow our newest council member to make his motion.
There we go.
Mike, you're muted.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by, we have a motion to adjourn by Mike, second by Roger. All those in favor, raise your hand. That was awful fast, Kevin. Unanimous, we are now adjourned. Have a great evening.